Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Western New England Law School. We're happy to welcome the Joint Committee on the Judiciary here today. We have had many other committees here before, but we're always happy to have the Judiciary Committee who has come to here before. We welcome you. On behalf of President Caprio, President of the University, and our Dean, Dean Gilvin, we're very happy you're able to be with us today. Dean Gilvin would be here, but he's out of town on official business, and you know how that is. So, really, I'm glad you're able to be with us. And with that said, and I welcome all of you here as well, I'd like to introduce someone whom we know, Senator Gill Converse.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome. And I want to thank my colleagues, Joint Committee Chairs John Fernandez from Milford and Senator Will Brownsberger from Belmont. Did I say that right? And thank you very much for being here today. And without further ado, gentlemen.
Thank you. So, we will convene a hearing of the Joint Committee on the Judiciary, and I'm Will Brownsberger. I'm the Senate Chair of the Judiciary, and to my right is Andy Johnson-Landry, the Chief Counsel, and to my immediate left, my Chief Counsel, and then to my immediate left, Representative John Fernandez, the House Chair, and I'll let him introduce his members and his staff.
Yes, thank you, Senator. To my left is Keith McFarland, who is, not Keith, Keith McFarland, who is our Chief of Staff on the House side, the Vice Chair Claire Cronin, Gretchen Bennett, who is Chief Legal Counsel, Representative Roy from Franklin, two members of the staff as well in the jury box over there, apparently passing judgment on us today, Paul Donato, who is our Research Director, and Jim McCarthy, who is our Deputy Counsel, and to my right, we have Representative Tucker and Representative Ellis.
Okay, so should we start with testimony, Professor Wolf, or did you want to start with some students?
Yes.
So I have signed up, I have Jennifer Weckley.
Weekly, yes.
Weekly, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just interrupt, this is the, I just neglected to point out, there are tapes going. If anybody does not wish to be taped, please tell me before you testify. Okay? Thank you.
So are you joined by Jessica as well?
Jessica's got it.
Okay, very good. Forward to your testimony.
Well, since we've already kind of had an introductions of sort, I guess I don't need to go through and tell you guys our names. We'd just like to thank you all for coming here. We've made the trip to Beacon Hill a few times, and it's nice for you guys to come here so that we can speak to you all about this bill. First, I'm just gonna kind of introduce to you guys how the bill was introduced to us. We're here to talk about Senate Bill 877. So we got on board with this bill when we signed up for the International Human Rights Clinic that's here at our school. They run that every semester, and people get different projects with that clinic. Most of the time, students at our school will be writing amicus briefs to be filed on pending cases, or they'll draft shadow briefs to be submitted to different committees within the United Nations. We were really, really fortunate. Jen and I both wanted something a little bit more hands-on. We'd done a lot of just writing and things like that in our law school's career already, so we were really excited when we got on board with this bill. Pretty much, so it's different in that we had a lot of hands-on interaction with the legislators and working on lobbying and things like that, and the other group of supporters who supported us in this bill, who I'll talk about later on. But basically, our project was to take this draft of a bill, and our bill, Senate Bill 877, is a bill that's aimed at extending the statute of limitations for claims of wrongful death, assault, and/or battery, but only where they arise to the level of a human rights violation. So these can include any kind of things such as trafficking, extrajudicial killing, genocide, war crimes, or any other crimes against humanity that are defined within. In short, we were given the task of being able to push forward legislation that would provide remedies to victims that often don't have any access to this type of remedy, or any remedy at all in some cases. Specifically, our bill is targeted at helping those victims who suffer human rights violations either outside the United States or within its borders at the hand of perpetrators who are at home within the Massachusetts Commonwealth. So we're pretty much just taking the state causes of action, tort actions, the wrongful death, assault, and battery, and extending those to people outside of the Commonwealth so that they have access to the remedies. So we got the bill. We didn't know all that much about it. We had to do a lot of research. So on top of learning how to become, for lack of a better term, lobbyists, we also had to do a lot of research about the bill and surrounding legal principles and things like that. So after extensive research to further understand the impact of the bill, we were really eager to further this legislation that was aimed at shrinking the gap in potential remedies for the victims. And generally, this kind of falls on victims who don't necessarily fall under the alien tort statute. That's kind of the gap that we're trying to fill with this bill, and Massachusetts would be the first state within the United States to pass something like this. So it really is monumentous, and hopefully, on the day that it's passed, we'll be extremely excited that all of our hard work has come into fruition. But my colleague Ms. Weckley will further explain to you guys the power and the pressing need for this type of legislation, not only in Massachusetts, but really across the board within the United States. So talking a little bit more about our process, we weren't the ones who drafted this bill. We were just given it, and we were kind of the man on the ground in trying to further it, introduce it to various senators, and discuss it with their staff members. We worked really closely with the drafters of the bill. They include the International Corporate Accountability Roundtable and Earth Rights. I don't know, you guys have probably heard about these. Both of them are based in Washington, D.C., and they work on various international human rights initiatives. And they actually linked up with our professor Lauren Karasik to kind of work on this project and explain to us why it was drafted and what kind of arguments or discussions we should be having with potential future supporters of the bill. After a few months, we worked on it, kind of just the two of us getting our heads around the background of it, and then we started to reach out to other law schools and other different organizations to try and rally community support around the bill. One of the first other institutional supporters we got was the Center for International Law and Policy at New England Law School. There actually is a group of students working there, and I believe that they, some of them will also be testifying on the bill when the hearing's held in Boston. And recently, students at Harvard Law School have also come together and started to work on the project as well. So it's been really cool to see it evolve through there. A lot of things that we worked on with these other students were community outreach and gaining constituent supports. So we did draft a petition, and we did an online petition. We got upwards of 200 signatures for individuals, and that's still a running thing. They're still gaining support and signatures for that. But we also really wanted to hone in and target some local community organizations that would be beneficial to helping us further our initiative. And just a list of those, I'm gonna give to you now. There's the National Lawyers Guild. This was the Massachusetts chapter. They worked with us a lot. They got us in touch with some press contacts and things like that. They actually helped us get in touch with Ann Lambert at the ACLU. She works in Massachusetts as well. She's their Legislative Director. So she gave us a lot of help in understanding the legislative process and working on our lobbying skills and things like that, which was probably one of the more enjoyable parts of this project for us. And we also got in touch with Mike Segal at MassTrack. He runs that website to track the bills and things like that, and he helped us get deadlines and things like that secure, especially with all those snow days that we had last winter. Some of our other organizational supporters include Oxfam America, Investors Against Genocide, the American Jewish World Service, the National Immigration Project for the National Lawyers Guild, Latin America Working Group, the Institute for Global Labor and Human Rights, the National Center for Lesbian Rights, Arise for Social Justice, which is actually a grassroots organization here in Springfield, Massachusetts, Global Exchange, Amnesty International, Jewish World Watch, the Massachusetts Coalition to Save Darfur, Massachusetts Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Coalition, the Center for Women Policy Studies, the Government Accountability Project, Pesticide Action Network, Out Now, and the Latin American Working Group. Working with all these community groups and getting them on board and having them understand exactly the strength of this bill helped us move away from all of the daunting legal issues that we kind of had to tackle in the beginning when we were learning about the bill, and we really got to discuss the access to justice, which is what's so wonderful about this bill and what Ms. Weckley will explain to you guys in just a couple of minutes. And then we were able to take that one step further after we got some local support to combine both the legal issues and the humanitarian side of this bill, to talk to legislators to help gain support for this bill and to ultimately secure a sponsor for the bill, who's Senator Mark Montigny. Like I said before, a lot of what we learned about just the general legislative process and things like that, we got from Ms. Ann Lambert and Mr. Mike Segal, as well as Professor Wolf and his wife Senator Candares. They helped us as well, trying to figure out how to navigate your systems and things like that, which was very enjoyable for us. We also did a lot of background research on specific senators and searching for who we thought would be ideally the person most interested in spearheading the legislation. And of course, after learning about the work that Senator Mark Montigny did on the human trafficking legislation, it just kind of really clicked when we met with him in his office, and he decided to take on the bill. So you guys have the list of the co-sponsors of Senator Mike Moore, Jason Lewis, and James Elbridge. And now I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Ms. Weckley so she can talk to you guys about the ingredient and exactly why this bill is so important, both legally and socially to our community, both local and worldwide, so.
Thank you. Good morning. Again, my name is Jennifer Weckley. I'm a third-year student here at Western New England School of Law, who also worked on the team introducing the bill. Thank you again for joining us here in Springfield. We know what the trip is like, and we appreciate you making that venture. I know that my colleague and I both sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be heard on this very important bill. This bill, shortly, is about ensuring access to justice. The proposed legislation before you seeks to rebalance the scales in human rights cases. Where short filing deadlines currently favor abusers over victims. Our proposal, again, is to extend the statute of limitations for claims of wrongful death, assault, and battery where the victim can establish that the abuse also rises to the level of a human rights violation. When victims of human rights violations file in state court, they must assert tort claims, such as wrongful death, assault, and battery. In Massachusetts, those victims only have three years before the claims expire. Where there are good reasons for, while there are good reasons for statutes of limitations in the normal context, victims of human rights abuses face unique obstacles to bringing their suit. It often takes many years for the victims to find their way out of the perilous circumstance. They typically have very little money or resources as they are marginalized people, and their cases can be especially complex and time-consuming to investigate and then attain counsel. There is precedent for this piece as a solution. Senate Bill 877 simply aligns the time limit for the filing of human rights claims en masse with the federal law, which allows victims 10 years to bring claims for torture. We'd also like for you to consider the Commonwealth's recent extension of the statute of limitations for victims of childhood sexual abuse, allowing victims 35 years to bring assault and battery claims in those cases. This is because Massachusetts has recognized that victims of egregious abuse face unique obstacles in charging their abusers. The same logic applies in human rights claims. States have always had the ability and the duty to provide remedies for human rights abuses, either in conjunction with or in place of federal law. While there are some federal remedies available to victims of human rights abuses, these statutes only cover a limited number of offenses and parties, leaving state law to fill in the gaps. These cases usually involve local defendants and often involve local plaintiffs, so the Commonwealth has vested interest in seeing that justice is served. Further, while many human rights abuses are crimes under federal law, prosecutions are rare and provide little in the way of practical support for survivors. Civil remedies can never make up for the harm suffered, but successful suits provide much-needed compensation to address lingering injuries and make life more manageable for the victims. Though a number of cases brought under the amendment would be small in number, they would be significant. Those who might file claims under the new statute of limitations could include, for example, a Massachusetts college student who was brutally abused and raped and tortured by an attacker while on study abroad, a Nigerian refugee persecuted for her Christian faith who now resides in Massachusetts, or perhaps Syrian protesters injured with nerve gas produced by a company that was headquartered in the Commonwealth. Passage of this proposal will ensure perpetrators of human rights abuse do not find safe harbor in Massachusetts. Reforms like this are desperately needed in all 50 states, but passing it here will affirm the Commonwealth's legacy of leadership in defending human rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Are there questions from members of the committee? I have a couple of questions, if nobody else does. Am I jumping ahead of anybody? So talk to me about the jurisdiction issues here. I mean, are we contemplating in general crimes that have happened outside the borders of Massachusetts?
Would you like to answer him? So in terms of jurisdictional requirements, we're not creating any new cause of action where we need to assess whether there is a new jurisdictional standard that needs to be met, since we already have the personal jurisdiction in place for these causes of action, wrongful death, assault, and battery, their tort claims. We already have, you know, case law in Massachusetts that tells us how and when we can bring those claims, even though we're, even though the action is happening elsewhere outside the borders of Massachusetts, perhaps, we still have to have that personal jurisdiction over the defendant, so nothing changes with the extension of the statute of limitations in this instance.
Okay. But is it contemplated, I mean, are these crimes that we think are in general going to be crimes that have occurred outside the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? Are we trying to trade, change the law that's really applicable to cases that are happening in Massachusetts, or is this really oriented to international events?
Well, I mean, ideally, it could be either. So in the unfortunate event that an international human rights abuse occurs on Massachusetts soil, this would definitely extend the time that those victims have to bring the claims from the three years to the 10 years proposed in this bill. But this is also reaching outside of acts that actually happen on Massachusetts soil and saying that if it's someone who is finding, someone or something that finds themselves at home outside, or at home in the Commonwealth and commits this kind of violation outside of the Commonwealth, that if they're gonna claim that they're one of our constituents or one of our citizens, then we're gonna hold them accountable for this because it's an international human rights violation.
So for example, if something were to happen to a Massachusetts resident, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can already exercise jurisdiction there, regardless of where that action took place. Or if the defendant is domiciled here or has their, you know, principal place of incorporation in Massachusetts, we can already exercise jurisdiction over that person should they commit some type of crime anywhere or some type of civil infraction anywhere in the world.
Interesting. So the currently applicable statutes are other provisions of Chapter 260 that just, what is, it's three years, and where is that set? I think you said it was three years. I'm just wondering where the basis, what applies to this? What's the statute that's governing now?
The current statute is the statute that is referring to wrongful death, assault, and battery tort claims in Massachusetts. So we are proposing to insert language there that would increase the statute of limitations only for those three tort claims, only in the instance where they rise to a human rights violation as it's defined in the statute.
So do we otherwise define a human rights violation outside the context of this legislation, such that there would be an applicable, current applicable definition?
Yep. In the, in the text of the bill.
If I'm in the text of the bill, my question may not be artfully asked. Is there a current?
You mean specifically just Massachusetts?
Yeah. Is there a current law that defines a human rights violation?
Well, if I may, in the text of the bill, there cited certain things, what we mean when we say human rights violation. So we're talking about torture, genocide, war crime, and extrajudicial killing. So those definitions do come from current law. So for example, an act of torture is defined in Section 2340 of Title 18 of the United States Code. Genocide in Section 1091A, Title 18 of the United States Code, and so forth. And so we define other places in law where we are pulling that language from. In terms of Massachusetts state law, the answer is, the answer is no. But there is significant federal definitions that we're pulling from, the Torture Victim Protections Act, for example.
So if I wanted to bring an action today in Massachusetts for a human rights violation using the U.S. Code, could I do that?
You could definitely bring your argument in court and say that you should be able to do that, but that's part of one of the things that's so important about this bill, is that it makes, it makes it so that the plaintiff in this case, who's also the victim of this abuse, doesn't have to make that legal argument. They don't have to piece those things together. So now we're saying you don't have to draw on federal precedent to say that this is a cause of action and I should be afforded remedy and damages in this situation. It's already gonna be within the statute to say that this falls on, this classifies as an assault, or this classifies as a wrongful death, or something like that.
So let's try it from a different direction. Is there a case that's been brought that's been allowed to move forward in the face of a motion to dismiss that seeks to bring a tort action on a human rights violation under the Code in a Massachusetts court?
In a Massachusetts court? No, because I don't think any of them have been given the opportunity or the ability to move forward on this because there's not some type of legislation like this. And part of it, too, that Ms. Weckley discussed in her, part of her testimony, was that a lot of times victims in these situations don't, they don't have an access to this because financially, even logistically, they could be somewhere else. So a lot of the claims that would be brought under this would be kind of nonprofit legal aid sources that are going through, and they're saying, we know you've been wronged, we want to help you get your remedy, because now there's this available source for you.
Do you know if there's a case that's been brought that was dismissed?
In Massachusetts? No, not that we could find, not in our research.
Neither allowed to move forward nor dismissed?
Yeah, yep. We don't have.
So we may be creating a new cause of action if it's not yet been established either by statute or by case law that there's a right to bring a human rights violation today under the U.S. Code in a Massachusetts court?
Well, what those cases are being brought as are tort claims, and those cases do go forward. So we're just asking it to be called what it is. We're asking for these types of crimes to be recognized by the, these crimes to be recognized, but the civil actions to be allowed by the Commonwealth and to use the language which really reflects what's happening and which really reflects what the Commonwealth has stood for in terms of a legacy in protecting human rights norms within our borders. So instead of allowing them to go forward as these tort claims, to really call them what they are.
Yeah, so I'm just, I guess I'm just struggling with the jurisdictional issues. I mean, I'm just kind of confused. Have other states, I mean, to the question, I mean, if somebody's committed, okay, so somebody's committed genocide in Rwanda, and they stumble into this Commonwealth, that's when we get to sue them for, to sue them in these courts?
It's not just when they stumble into, so if you're talking about that situation, so if it's someone who's from Rwanda or someone who is from a different country and they committed the genocide in Rwanda, and then they come to the United States and establish residency, then, then you could bring the cause of action. But you can't, just because they, just because they necessarily walk in, you still have to establish jurisdiction, the personal jurisdiction over the defendant. So just walking into Massachusetts or flying over Massachusetts in an airplane, that would still have to meet the personal jurisdiction threshold. And so basically, what we're saying is that in cases where the personal jurisdiction threshold is met, then you can bring this claim. So there's still the whole legal issue of establishing the jurisdiction over the parties of the action. So I think maybe why it's hard to visualize is because we don't necessarily have concrete examples for cases that have been brought, because they haven't, because people haven't had the access to this remedy, and that's why this is so important to get passed.
Hold on a second. Is it because they haven't had this bill, or because it just really never is gonna happen because these people aren't really in our country? What, is it the three-year issue that's prevented?
Absolutely, absolutely, because three years, let's say that that happened.
Do we have cases that have been dismissed for statute of limitations issues in this case in the Commonwealth?
We don't have any.
Well, what we, what we believe is that they're not being dismissed for those issues, they're just not being pursued.
Do we have examples of that?
Well, because they're not being pursued at any level, so they're not entering our court system because folks are accessing.
So we don't, do we know that there's, do we know that there's a class of plaintiffs? Do we know? Do we have any data that says, as opposed to inferences? Do we have data that says?
We do not have data to support that, no. It's a catch-22, for sure.
How is it a catch-22?
We believe because we can't, we can't document things that are not brought. So we cannot tell you how many people are dissuaded from bringing claims on year five when they finally realize they could have a cause of action because they've been in that perilous situation for those five years. When parents or surviving members of the family are finally done grieving and they finally think perhaps we have a cause of action, but the time has elapsed. So it's hard to document those instances, which are the instances we're hoping to allow to go forward should there be a more meaningful window to bring these types of claims.
I'm looking at Section 38. We have enforced prostitution, forced pregnancy, enforced sterilization, or any other form of sexual violence of comparable gravity. What does that mean? I mean, how do we, comparable gravity, it sounds like a little, is it basically a judgment called the judge would make and decide whether the statute's applicable, based on the seriousness of it, or?
Well, you're talking about?
Shifting to a different issue now.
The crime against humanity definition? That definition is a widely used one for what constitutes a crime against humanity.
What, the words comparable gravity?
The entire, all of the language in Section 38.
From where?
Is used in the International Criminal Court to define what is a crime against humanity. It's been adopted in the Torture Victims Protection Act as well, I believe. The, it's slightly modified here to have one word omitted from it, and that's torture. And torture's addressed in a previous provision in Section 37. But other than that, it's language that's for consistency's sake borrowed from other federal sources and international sources.
And I think the, the specific reason for, I mean, we didn't draft that, obviously. We adopted that specifically from the international standard. But what the, the reason why they have that language there of comparable gravity is because things like this continue to happen, and the people who perpetrate these kinds of crimes do it in different ways. Up until several years ago, rape wasn't considered a war, a crime of war, and now it is. So I mean, there's a lot of expansion in this field because people are realizing the victims that exist and the terrible atrocities that have been performed against them. So I think it's there just to not limit something terrible happening to someone and it not necessarily falling under one of these examples from Section 38, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
A couple of other questions. So I'm trying to watch this play out, to your point about timing under the current three-year statute of limitations, or even under the statute of limitations. Useful against governments?
We don't have anything in this provision that specifically states any kind of action under color of law or anything like that. You certainly couldn't sue another government within the state. We haven't really necessarily addressed this issue because we haven't thought about the Massachusetts government being held as a perpetrator of these things, so.
Well, so I'm thinking the Syrian situation right now. The Assad government is dropping bombs on its own, on their own people. Lots of refugees. They're gonna make their way to the United States. They make their way to Massachusetts. Cause of action?
The only way you'd have a cause of action there is if one of the people from the Syrian government decided to retire in Massachusetts, and they became a resident of Massachusetts, and then you're letting a plaintiff come to Massachusetts and sue that person who is now residing in Massachusetts as a Massachusetts resident.
But if the refugee comes and lives in Massachusetts and has residency?
That doesn't necess.
It's not gonna?
A long-arm statute would do that.
Well, so you could, you could attempt to establish personal jurisdiction in that situation. Again, you're still gonna have to go over the threshold of establishing personal jurisdiction through a long-arm statute. So that would have to be fleshed out in the actual case.
And what was the last section of the bill? There was a section of the bill that had, which one is it? Section 2 of 40?
Section 2 of 40. We were looking at this several weeks ago in terms of the bill. The act shall be construed to apply retroactively and shall apply regardless of when any action or claim shall have accrued or been filed, and so on. Can you explain what that means? We were struggling with that.
Yeah, so this is just a.
Because it sounds like we're talking about 100-year-old crimes.
So this is just a tolling scheme here, and actually, we So this is just a tolling scheme here, and actually, we've addressed looking at this. We got this from the. Okay, so the the human trafficking statute also applies retroactively. So that's where this language is brought from. And so this is basically a tolling scheme saying that. So if if you have the ten-year statute of limitations and you don't.
What we're hoping to do is have some type of revival provision available so that for a designated window of time, folks will be able to bring these claims dating as far back as deemed necessary when this hopefully goes through committee and is heard and in a tolling scheme, decision is made. But we what we are hoping is that it does go infinitely back and that you have that meaningful window, that ten-year meaningful window, which may toll once you are aware of, you know, your cause of action, as is found in some other statutes. But we are hoping that this revival provision would go back pretty a pretty significant amount of time to allow those claims to go forward where they previously were barred.
When you say a pretty significant amount of time, you mean decades?
We were originally discussing with the other coalition members that we were hoping that it could go as far back as the Armenian genocide.
Yeah, the Armenian genocide.
To allow for those types of claims to be heard.
So the ten years would run from what, the passage of the legislation?
Correct, yes.
And relate back to any cause of action historically?
But it's 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 not ten years. It wouldn't be ten years from when.
I can't read that provision almost any other way.
Yeah.
Other than to say that it has for the ten years to mean anything when you say it shall apply regardless of when it happened.
Yeah.
I can't really mean it and I can't read it myself any other way than to say from the passage of the legislation, you got ten years to file an action.
Correct.
For anything that happened anytime essentially since something like the lunar eclipse last night.
Well, still having established the personal jurisdiction over that person. So, I mean, it's not any person into any time in the future, I mean, in the past. You still have to that person still has to be established within the Massachusetts borders.
Well, can can the action be brought only against the person? Can the action be brought against IBM for actions during World War II in Germany? Can the action be brought against the German government?
As long as it can be brought against, I mean, as long as you're establishing the jurisdiction within Massachusetts.
I think IBM's probably doing some business in Massachusetts.
Yeah, exactly. But that's the thing. Do you want corporations who have committed egregious international human rights violations to be at home in the Commonwealth and for you to be supporting them as a government?
Yeah, that's not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking is about the reach of the actions.
And I understand that.
To your point earlier, statute of limitations have reasons to exist. And it is about the freshness of evidence and all kinds of things like that. I was only asking the question without judging whether the answer is a good one or a bad one. If we were talking about IBM's actions during World War II in support of the German government and their work or whoever's work, I don't want to pin this on them, but in terms of the enormity of the tracking that was done of the Jewish people and those who were put into concentration camps, cause of action possibly under the bill because the reach is ten years back infinitely.
In terms of holding corporations accountable, it current case law really supports it needing to be a Massachusetts incorporated corporation. There is a new standard where the corporation needs to be essentially at home. And really, what that seems to mean is that it needs to be a Massachusetts corporation. So whether or not IBM, I'm not familiar where IBM is incorporated.
Yeah, I don't know.
But whether or not somebody comes to Massachusetts, does some business, as they do in many of the other fifty states, that probably won't meet the threshold. But really, it's about, as my colleague was saying, holding those folks who are incorporated in the state of Massachusetts accountable.
All right, thank you. Nice job.
Nice job, ladies. Yeah, another question over here.
Yes, question on, and it goes back to the jurisdictional question. First of all, who would be the defendant? So say I'm a victim of depraved sexual assault in a foreign country. Is it the obviously the person who performed the act? Are you holding the country accountable and how do you establish jurisdiction? And I use the example of, say, I in Massachusetts, there's a. It's alleged that I committed an act in Massachusetts and a claim is brought in Hawaii saying that it was some form of sexual violence of comparable gravity. And the courts of Hawaii establish some forum and conduct a trial. And the question of whether I show up or I've ever been served with papers, perhaps they exercise long-arm jurisdiction. How is that fair to a defendant to be brought in the state of Hawaii when you live in Massachusetts? In the same juncture, why? How can it be fair to bring somebody who committed an act in a foreign country in the court in Massachusetts? And the bottom line, wouldn't this be something better for some sort of a world court forum?
I guess so much is your your term of fairness. Fair for the person to be brought from Hawaii to to respond to claims of a very serious sexual illicit sexual encounter that they had with someone in Massachusetts and then they went back home to Hawaii?
No, no, didn't go home, just.
They just went there.
They decided to bring the action in Hawaii.
Okay.
With no connection themselves to Hawaii?
They moved.
It wouldn't it they would be brought back to Massachusetts. I mean, if they're if they committed it in Massachusetts, the crime was committed in Massachusetts, so then there's.
Well, Hawaii in that instance would have a vested interest in making sure that a citizen of their state is receives justice. And so they can exercise, and I'm not familiar with Hawaii, yet again, but could exercise a long-arm statute to ensure that just because something happened elsewhere to that person, that 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 the plaintiff in this case still has a cause of action that can be brought.
Against a defendant in Massachusetts who has absolutely no contact with.
Okay, are we I'm sorry, I'm like, the hypothetical is starting to confuse me. Are we saying that Massachusetts, in this hypothetical world, that Massachusetts created or not Massachusetts, Hawaii passed a bill similar to SB eight seventy-seven? And so now they're trying to pull someone from Massachusetts to bring them to Hawaii to make the claim for something that happened in Massachusetts? So that's what we're saying, right? Okay.
Trying to see how that's different from what you're proposing would happen in some other end of the world. What would Massachusetts interest other than housing the particular plaintiff be in exercising jurisdiction over this defendant and resolving this case? So we get to that part. And then who's going to enforce this judgment?
I think the first thing I want to say most generally is that as the as some of our laws, including the ones with really short statute of limitation, they currently favor or in terms of fairness, they currently favor those defendants. They favor not the victims of the crimes, not the people seeking to bring the civil actions to seek redress, but they're actually favoring in their current status kind of inertia, right? So we we have defendants who are hoping perhaps, or at least theoretically, that time will pass and claims will not be brought. So this extension is to, as I said in my opening, to rebalance those scales in a way that is not unfair to defendants, but in a way that equal equalizes the playing field. And those mechanisms, such as long-arm statutes, already exist. We've already decided, or most states, I believe, have decided that just because something happens outside of its borders doesn't mean they don't have a vested interest in in addressing that issue for its citizens. So my my answer most generally is that those mechanisms already exist and that we are hoping to just capitalize on those mechanisms by extending the statute of limitations.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for your testimony. Professor Wolf.
Good afternoon, Senator Brownsberger and Representative Fernandez. Thank you very much for being here today and listening to our testimony regarding these bills. The focus of my testimony is on S eight seven seven, the bill that you were just addressing with Jessica and Jennifer. And also, I have some comments with respect to S eleven sixteen and House fifteen thirty. Those are the companion bills dealing with female genital mutilation, which, as you know, is generally referred to as FGM. There's actually a debate over what is the proper description of that kind of procedure. The State Department takes kind of a combined view. They refer to it as female genital mutilation slash cutting, but whatever you want to call it, it's a very devastating procedure that's performed on many women around the world. Much of the FGM really occurs in countries in Africa, although there are areas in other ports where it exists. I've taught human rights for many years here, and in fact, last semester, when we had a course in I have a course in human rights, which is a simulation course in which the students get to participate as attorneys in a made-up case. And we had one involving FGM, which came and we set it in Nigeria, which is a country that has a fair amount of this procedure having been performed on on the women who live there. The.
Is that a particular subtribal culture? Is it?
Yes, you know, it is, and it's longstanding in many, many tribes in Africa. Sometimes it's referred to as among people as cultural relativism, you know, maybe we shouldn't interfere with the cultures of others. But it does trace its origins back many, many years for a variety of reasons. And it does it does recur to this day, even though however ancient it is. We see in our country, many cultures of that sort have practices of that sort have gone away, but it still persists in many places in Africa. And in fact, in Nigeria, just a side story, in Nigeria, the the country itself has prohibited it, but they don't really enforce it because the practice has been so ingrained in the people there. Now, part of the problem that these bills are seeking to create was really created by the United States Supreme Court in a case called Kaia Bell versus Royal Dutch Petroleum Company. And many of these types of cases were brought for the last probably thirty or forty years under a statute called the Alien Tort Statute, which is a statute that Congress passed in seventeen eighty-nine. And it really wasn't used very much until starting probably nineteen eighty, when an opinion of the Second Circuit gave it new life. And so there's been were a number of cases brought under this statute. The problem with the statute, of course, it's a statute that creates jurisdiction for aliens, so citizens of the United States couldn't use it. And second of all, only for torts. And third, you had to demonstrate that there was a violation of international human rights or as the statute had it, the Law of Nations or the Treaties of the United States. And so the Supreme Court in two thousand and twelve decided that this statute, which had been doing quite well in the area of international human rights, would not be and would not be applied to events that happened outside the United States. This is a question Senator Brownsberger was talking about and Representative Fernandez, that there's a presumption, a presumption, at least under the United States law, that statutes would not, at least at the federal level, would not be applied or not be applied extraterritorially unless Congress indicated there was a a specific direction by the Congress that this statute should apply abroad. And we've done that. Congress has done it with antitrust laws, for example. So having done that, having put this huge gap in the law that is prohibiting the statute being used for things that happen outside of the country, that the then there were folks that, well, maybe we should try to remedy that on a on a state level. And we know that the Massachusetts legislature has been very active in the area of human rights, and we congratulate you for that. There's many laws here that are have been drafted and passed, and Massachusetts has been a leader in that area. And so the idea was, well, let's maybe we should do this on a state-by-state basis. So I strongly support these bills and hope that the committee will advance them to the floors of their respective chambers. Now, having said that, having said that these laws deserve at least my support and hopefully yours, as I read the bills, there are some ambiguities in them. And some of the members have already raised some of those ambiguities. And in my judgment, the committee should address those ambiguities and see if they can be made more specific with respect to the bills that are before you. Let me talk about the first point, and that's the coverage for victims. Now, the victims and the scenarios that would arise under these statutes fall into three categories. One is the case where the victim and the offender and the events occur within the Commonwealth. The second category is where the victim lives in Massachusetts or resides here, but the offender and/or the events occurred outside the Commonwealth. It could be in Hawaii, it could be Montana, it could be in Syria, it could be any place in the world outside of the Commonwealth. And the third category is the one that was really involved in the Kaio case, and that is where the victim and the perpetrator, the offender, and the events all occurred outside of the Commonwealth. So in reviewing these these bills, I would really urge the committee to decide whether because the bills are not clear, although one could draw inferences, it extends to all three categories, the committee needs to be clear about whether the bills are intended to apply to all three of those categories or just one or two of them. And of course, that does raise the question, the jurisdictional questions, that has all been raised, and that is that, you know, there's two types of two types of jurisdiction. One is your province, which is called legislative jurisdiction. The other is judicial jurisdiction. When you go to law school, you know, they always teach you about judicial jurisdiction. They don't teach you very much about legislative jurisdiction, and there are two different standards. There's an easier standard for legislative jurisdiction than there is for judicial jurisdiction. Legislative jurisdiction tends to focus on the subject matter of the of the bill and ask the question whether there are sufficient contacts between not only prospective defendants, but the events that occur and the Commonwealth, whereas judicial jurisdiction insists that the particular defendant be brought before the court consistent with the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. So when you're thinking about these bills, and I know you are thinking about them, you need to look at them, in my judgment, in those three categories and decide which of those three categories should be included in the bills. And my recommendation would be that all three should be, but obviously, the third category is a more difficult question than the first category. Obviously, if things happen in Commonwealth, you always have legislative jurisdiction to address that. If all the events happen outside the Commonwealth, then it's a different matter. But anyway, that's something the court, the committee should surely address. Second point, I want to raise the statute of limitations, and that has also been raised with Jessica and Jennifer. With one exception, the bills are not clear when the limitations period begins to run. And that, of course, is a critical point. When do you start the clock? Whether it be a three-year limitation, five-year, ten-year, twenty-year period, it's got to start somewhere. And with the exception of eleven sixteen and fifteen thirty, which keys the time for starting when the minor becomes majority age, eighteen, the statute of limitations issue really is unclear. Now, generally speaking, statute of limitations run from usually three periods of time. One, when the events occurred. When did the crime or whatever it might be, civil action, events that give rise to a civil claim, did it start, does the limitations period start when that event occurred? That's number one. Number two, sometimes you see in statute of limitations the phrase, the word accrued. When does the claim accrue? And when it accrues is not always connected to the time when the events occurred. For example, people may be exposed to asbestos. They don't they may not know it at the time, and so you wouldn't start the clock running from them. You would start that period when they were exposed, but rather when the disease manifested itself. manifested itself several years later. And so sometimes the word accrue is used, and it's not synonymous with the day that events occurred. So that's choice number two. Choice number three, in these cases, looking at these bills, would be the date that the victim either entered Massachusetts or returned to Massachusetts, because there may be claims that arise under these statutes. It would be for someone who's a resident of Massachusetts and it happens elsewhere in the country or outside the country. And so you could key it to that as well, that is, the statute limitations begins to run when the person, the victim, turns their home in Massachusetts, or in the case of perhaps alien, refugees, when they entered Massachusetts, say, as a permanent resident. So I would really recommend that the committee focus, as it has to the questions you asked to my, to our students, that you need to take a closer look at the statute limitations issue and be more precise in both bills as to when it starts running. Now, third thing I'd like to talk about is the status of covered persons. And that is, who is going to be covered by these bills? And they should apply, of course, to all residents of Massachusetts as a starting point. And whether you're a resident here by whatever means, whether you're born here or you moved here, residency to me should be the key. Now, and that would include people who are not citizens as well. If you're a lawful permanent resident, you reside here, you should be covered by the bill. If you're here temporarily, I think there's some discussion to be had about that. Lots of people come into Massachusetts temporarily, they're traveling through the state, for example, whether they're here for visiting purposes, whether they're here on business, whatever. So when you're talking about residency, I think that is a good word to use, which would at least, it's a starting point for determining who should be covered by these bills. The restriction in the FGM bill is to minors. And in my judgment, that is too restrictive, that the limit to women under, or women or girls under, females under eighteen is a very good starting point because the majority of FGMs performed on young women. But not always. There are cultures in Africa and elsewhere where FGM is performed on adult women, women who are over the age of eighteen. And I don't see that, if you're having a bill like this, which is a good one, and I support it strongly, that it should include adult women as well. And so I would suggest that you can consider whether the age restriction in the bill ought to remain, or whether it should be removed and be applied to any female who has undergone or is going to undergo a procedure of this sort. The bills should also, the bills we're talking about, eight seven seven, eleven sixteen and fifteen thirty, they should also have a definition of person, that is, you want to be able to say precisely who is going to be the defendant, and the plaintiff as well, because while we also often think of these cases in terms of individual plaintiff, and there may be a group that wants to bring it, there may be situations where women are too embarrassed. When you're dealing with cultures like this, it's very embarrassing because it's part of your culture to come forward and say, ah, I want to be, I'm going to sue my mother or my grandmother, because in many cases, this operation, this procedure, this FGM is performed by family members. And so it may be that it would be good if the bill would not limit it to simply natural persons but others. So I would say that you should define person, the word person broadly, that is, whether it's a plaintiff or whether it's defendant, to include both natural persons, either private or public, and you need to include both, because sometimes these things are performed by private individuals or engaged by private and public officials, and it should include legal entities such as business organizations and governmental units. Not too long ago, the Supreme Court excluded a very important, ruled in a very important human rights case that you couldn't sue the PLO, because the PLO, Palestine Liberation Organization, was not within the definition of the word person in that particular statute. Now, you know, it seems to me that that restriction is something that these bills should not pick up. That is, the bill should permit the suits to be brought either by natural persons or by legal entities, and certainly defendants should be included as persons who are not necessarily natural persons, such as governmental units and business organizations. Now, there was discussion-
Professor, excuse me, for clarity, you're suggesting that for both sets of bills?
Yes.
So to the question I asked earlier, should governments be subject to?
Yes.
Your answer would be yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, there, of course, when you're talking about governments, you can do that, of course, that's governed, of course, by the Foreign Sovereignty Immunity Act, and there's a federal statute governing the immunity of states, the nations of the world. Whether it applies to subunits is an open question, and whether it applies, certainly doesn't apply to natural persons. So officials are not covered by the Foreign Sovereignty Immunity Act. But when you look at covering governmental units, you need to take a look at the Foreign Sovereignty Immunity Act to see how that meshes with state law, because, you know, there is an open question, I suppose, about whether Massachusetts could allow suits against sovereigns. That's not allowed by the USIA, the FSIA, but I think there might be supremacy clause pressure, a question there. But if you decide, if you decide that persons outside the country should be subject to suit in Massachusetts courts, then, in my judgment, you ought to put something in there about personal jurisdiction. I think the legislative jurisdiction issue is a lot easier, but the personal jurisdiction question is more difficult. The question before about someone committing a crime against, I think it was a Hawaiian resident in Massachusetts, or committing-
No, no, this was a tort that occurred in Massachusetts-
Yes.
And the defendant lives in Massachusetts-
Yes.
And the victim moved to Hawaii and decided to sue for that tort in Hawaii.
Yes.
What would give the Hawaiian court jurisdiction over this case, and why should the Massachusetts defendant have to answer in a court of Hawaii? It was using it as an analogy to, if we can't make that jump within the continental United States, how can we force a defendant from a foreign land to come in and defend themselves in a Massachusetts court?
Yes, and they raise, Representative Roy, the same question, because, as it turns out, the rules governing personal jurisdiction within the United States of America and the rules governing personal jurisdiction across national lines are the same. And they're both, what Supreme Court's come to be phrased as the minimum contact standard, is actually a two-step process. One step is to determine whether there are minimum contacts between the defendant and the forum state, in your case, are there contacts between Massachusetts and Hawaii? And the other part of it is, is it reasonable to, even if there are minimum contacts, is it reasonable to the forum, for the forum state to assert jurisdiction over that defendant? And that question is the same, whether it's a person living in Massachusetts who wants to be sued, or the plaintiff wants to sue in Hawaii, or whether a person in Massachusetts is suing someone who resides in Nigeria, Niger, or Rwanda or anywhere. So, and that, because there is that question about personal jurisdiction, I really would recommend to the committee that you include a provision, because if the legislature makes a judgment about that and makes findings with respect to personal jurisdiction, one way or the other, I mean, you may decide, oh, we can't do it. But if you decide that there's a decent argument that's consistent with the due process clause, then it's helpful to courts, if you make the proper findings about that and support your judgment, that personal jurisdiction can extend from the Commonwealth to Kentucky, from the Commonwealth to Montana, from the Commonwealth to Hawaii, from the Commonwealth to Uganda, Rwanda, South Sudan, or wherever it might be. So- And that's, of course, whether you do that or not depends on how broad you want to make the bill, as I talked before, what categories of people you want to cover. People only living in Massachusetts and the events occur here, people who live in Massachusetts but the events occur elsewhere, or people who are elsewhere when the events giving rise to the claim under these bills arise. So the two are linked together, how broad you want to make your bill in terms of who the plaintiffs will be and the question of personal jurisdiction over defendants who may be elsewhere. The fourth point I'd like to say is this, that the committee ought to consider alternative And the alternative enforcement mechanism I would recommend is to consider including the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination as an enforcement agency. And of course, you would need to speak to Chairman Williamson and others whether they're interested in doing that, but I think the committee should consider including the MCAD as an alternative forum, an alternative authority. Now, of course, that raised the question whether you want to include the Attorney General as well in that scheme, because there are lots of situations where plaintiffs, again, either culturally or because of their pocketbook or for a variety of reasons, really will not be able to afford the suit. Now, we know that there are attorney fee provisions here, so that's good, that's really excellent that the bills have those attorney fee provisions, because it helps provide additional enforcement for people who cannot afford an attorney. But the MCAD is an organization which is, it really reduces the amount of costs for victims to bring their claims, and the MCAD has been around a long time. The Attorney General, the same thing, if you have Attorney General actions. So that should be something to be considered. The only thing about the MCAD is that you, if you do that, and I recommend that you do, don't make it a prerequisite for litigation. You know, we have this rule here, Massachusetts elsewhere, that you have to exhaust your administrative remedies before you go into a court. Well, you don't want that to happen. You want the victim to have a genuine choice of whether they want to bring a suit in the, in a court, in our case, the spirit court, or whether they want to go the MCAD, or to the Attorney General. The, one should not be a prerequisite for the other. So on these, and they're referred to sometimes as dual enforcement schemes, where you have both public and private people who can bring these suits. And you want to be able to give the victim the genuine choice of whether they can, they will pursue the remedy either privately with their own attorney, or whether they want to go the MCAD or the Attorney General. So I don't know that I want to say anything else except this. The question may arise of, why does Massachusetts have to file a, have a criminal justice, a criminal bill that makes FGM a crime when we have the federal statute, eighteen U.S.C. section one sixteen? And the answer is, one of the students said before, is because there may not be enough staff at the federal level to do it. I don't know what the current Attorney General's view is about how prosecuting FGM fits into the broad scheme of the crimes that the federal government pursues, but historically, as you know, crime is a local matter. It's a matter that's been assigned to the states to pursue. Federal criminal activity is only supposed to be interstitial, filling gaps that either the states are unwilling or unable to do. And so it's important that the state have a comparable criminal statute, because the federal government just is not positioned to deal with it in an effective way. The other thing is that the federal statute member is strictly criminal. It doesn't have the civil remedies that are here in eleven sixteen and fifteen thirty. And the civil side is extremely important. And so there are going to be situations where prosecutors here may want to bring criminal actions, but the civil remedy is really critical, and the federal system doesn't, the federal statutes don't have a civil remedy for FGM. So I thank you again for conducting this hearing here out in Springfield. We really appreciate seeing you. When Gail was in the Legislature, I used to spend a lot of time in Boston, and appreciated, and I always loved being, you know, when I, I worked for a member of Congress, something we know him, Congressman Robert Driney, and he was in the House for many years. And he, when you work in the Congress, it was, it was very restrictive to get yourself onto the floor of the House or the Senate. And so here in Massachusetts, the Speaker and the Presidents of the Senate are very nice in that regard. And so I had an opportunity, to me, it was a huge thrill. I mean, you go to the floor every day, it's no big deal. But for people like me, who is a kind of legislative supremacist, really supremacist, as well as love of the institution of legislatures, it was such a big thrill to be able to be on the floor of the Senate of the House, and it happened from time to time when they, for certain kinds of things. But anyway, again, we appreciate you being here, and my plan is to submit to you some written testimony. I want to hear all the way on today, and as questions came up, perhaps the written testimony will be able to be more carefully crafted to address some of your concerns.
Thank you very much, Representative Roy.
My question would be, what facts or findings would justify the legislature exercising jurisdiction over some foreign country or foreign resident to bring them in to answer in a court of Massachusetts? It just seems to me like we're attempting to conduct foreign policy through a tort proceeding in a Massachusetts court, and I think the State Department might object to that, but I know you did mention that if we did exercise this jurisdiction, we ought to issue some facts or findings to support that, and I'm curious as to what would support the exercise of jurisdiction in these circumstances.
Yes, and again, there's, the legislative jurisdiction issue is separate from the judicial jurisdiction issue. And to the extent that you're looking at both of them, both of them require some kind of contact between either the prospective defendant and the Commonwealth, the forum state, or requires, in legislative jurisdiction terms, requires some kind of connection between the subject matter, that is, say, female genital surgeries or female genital mutilation, and the forum state. And one series of events that perhaps the committee should look at is the connection between women, for example, who have had that procedure, and their current presence in Massachusetts, because I've assumed, and maybe I'm incorrect about it, that everyone who would bring us a lawsuit would be a resident of Massachusetts. And I think that's, we talked about that before, about how important it is to make sure that these bills specify who are, who are the people who are covered by it, who can bring suits in Massachusetts courts. And I started with the assumption that it would be a resident.
A resident at the time of the act, or a resident any time thereafter?
Well, it's a progression, isn't it?
It's a distinction.
That's the question I'm getting at. I'm not talking about an act that occurred in Massachusetts. This is an act that occurred in a foreign land, and I had understood that you had three categories of cases, and this would fall under the second category. The act occurred in a foreign land, and I'll accept your premise that the young lady moved to Massachusetts, has established residency here, certainly she can bring an action, but what, what would justify the Commonwealth of Massachusetts exercising jurisdiction over that person or entity that conducted that act in a foreign land and has absolutely no connection to Massachusetts?
Well, creating the claim is easier than getting jurisdiction over the defendant, because when people in that situation, people have undergone FGM, are in the Commonwealth, that potentially creates a liability for the Commonwealth, because some of the extreme forms of FGM are horrible, and it leaves lasting physical damage, it leaves lasting psychological damage. And sometimes the people who come here, come here because the health system of the United States is so much better. And of course, Massachusetts is the best among the states of the Union, you know that. And so the burden that's placing on Massachusetts to take care of people who are, women who have been victims of FGM, for example, and some of the other claims in the other statutes, if you've been tortured, for example, that also can leave permanent injury, both physical- if you've been tortured, for example, that also can leave permanent injury, both physical and mental. And so, the burden that that places upon the Commonwealth in terms of healthcare, to me, is the kind of connection that should be looked at to justify at least legislative jurisdiction over the kinds of claims that are created by these three statutes, three bills, two companion bills and the 877. And so, on the, as far as legislative jurisdiction, that connection, in my judgment, and that connection, of course, in category one is very clear, and I don't know if anybody has a problem with category one, everything happens in Massachusetts. Category two is where the person lives here, and then the event occurs outside Massachusetts. And the third is the person who is someplace else when it happens, and they're coming, they're moving to Massachusetts and becoming a resident. So, on the legislative jurisdiction side, it seems to me it's an easier case. When you're talking about the individual defendant, and that is that the person who's living in, wherever they're living, that's more difficult. But it seems to me the argument there has to do with a theory that's sometimes referred to as the impact theory. And that is, if the defendant has had an impact, maybe substantial impact, on a person or persons in the Commonwealth, that is sufficient for the Massachusetts Long Arm statute, which currently, I believe it does not do this, could reach out to other places, not only foreign countries, but other parts of the United States. And the impact that that defendant has had on the Commonwealth, because he or she has committed this horrendous act, that that would be sufficient. There's a nice case, by the way, in the First Circuit Court of Appeals, which deals with the antitrust laws, where the First Circuit said exactly that, that this is a Japanese corporation, never came to the United States, but its impact was such on the United States that they authorized jurisdiction in the United States District Court of Massachusetts. So, that's economics, though, you know, and this is maybe, maybe different, but it seems to me it should be stronger if it's human rights. So, it's that impact. And now the question becomes, do you look at impact simply for a particular perpetuary? Do you ask yourself the question, well, is it only this one defendant, for example, in the civil case? We look at the impact that defendant has had on the Commonwealth? And if it's a impact, substantial impact, then the answer is yes, we have personal jurisdiction. The answer is no, then we don't. But there's some authority in the Supreme Court about so-called cumulative impact of defendants? That is, you don't look at only the particular defendant that's before the court, but rather all defendants that are similarly situated, and whether they have had or could have an impact on the Commonwealth. There's a case called Wickard versus Filberg, 1842, but using the cumulative impact theory applied to these human rights issues, it usually arises in the economic context, but I see no reason why it can't be applied in the human rights context, that you, when you're asking the impact, you not only say, what's the impact this defendant had on the Commonwealth, committing this horrendous act against the person that lives here, we have to take care of that person, but rather, if you accumulate all the persons who have committed those acts outside the country, or maybe just in the, the country where the person's from, then it seems to me that that would be a way of bridging the gap and satisfying the personal jurisdiction requirements of the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just briefly, just a couple of observations. I want to say thank you to the students as well for the work and dedication they've shown. I just have a couple of just brief observations, and you don't have to respond, first of all, but just, I just felt the need to raise them. I'm concerned about the Commonwealth's ability to enforce any type of successful action if this, if this became law. I'm thinking if Massachusetts is a first in the nation having something like 877, other states don't have it, they may not recognize any reciprocity. I think it's particularly troublesome trying to enforce it outside the borders of the Commonwealth. I agree with Representative Roy, I just, I'm struggling with the jurisdiction issue when all events and parties to the claims live outside. Third is the question of residency. And I'm just wondering, in today's world, we have very transitory world, people move in, is a resident somebody who comes and sets up here because it's a law that's favorable to them, and they stay with no intention of staying, or do we put in a definition of a domiciliary? And the last is under the statute of limitations. I looked at the three things that you mentioned of what would begin the clock to run, and I didn't see anything about repressed memory, which is something that many states have put in place, particularly if they contemplate some of the crimes of a sexual nature that we've talked about. So, just, those are just some of the concerns. I do applaud you for the work you've done in this, though.
Well, thank you, Representative Tucker. Yeah, the repressed memory can be, is an issue, of course, and that's particularly true of traumatic events. So, that'd be, certainly I would support that if you wish to identify that as a way to starten the clock. With respect to the residency, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to limit it to domiciliaries, that would be certainly one way of dealing with it, because resident certainly is a more generous concept than it is of domiciliary. So, I don't feel very strongly about the one way or the other. And the, personally, you said about the jurisdictional?
The ability to enforce a successful action.
Oh, the enforcement issue. Yeah, that's a constant problem, and, no, even in the United States, even in the United States, if you have a judgment from Massachusetts and the defendant does not have any assets in the Commonwealth, then you've got to go where the defendant has assets. And so, and that's the full faith and credit clause, of course, in the statute. So, that's the way the United States solves it. International law has the same concept, and there are treaties that deal with this question. But, where do you got to go? You've got to go find the defendant somewhere. And where the defendant is, then you can use the same, you can use that judgment in Massachusetts and take it to a foreign court. The only problem, of course, is the only reservation, of course, you have to, the court entering the judgment has to, has to have personal jurisdiction, something about jurisdiction. But other than that, sure, you just take the judgment and go somewhere. So, that's a problem. And in international, it's even more of a problem. But there is law out there that would help the victim collect the judgment. Maybe these days, you know, there's some agency that, collective agency that does overseas enforcement.
Thanks, Professor, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's great. Thank you very much, Professor. No further questions. By the way, we've enjoyed our representative Gonzalez, welcome.
Representative Harrington.
And Representative Harrington.
To my right.
To my immediate right. There she is, I'm sorry. And we've got, thank you very much for your testimony. And so, I've got Dr. Mary Banda will be my next witness. Are you present, Dr. Banda? Wonderful. And then we're going to go to David Maria, just so people know, David Maria, Mauricio Rodriguez, and then Ana Sandoval. Those are the next three witnesses.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Thank you for coming today.
Just want you to know the chairs in Boston are not this comfortable.
Oh, it's great, then, that I'm sitting in front of you here, comfortable. Thank you.
Please proceed. Go ahead.
My name is Dr. Mary Banda, and I'm a physician at Mercy Medical Center, and I practice hospital medicine. I'm a fellow in the American College of Physicians and a fellow in hospital medicine. And I also founded a charity called Jambo Tanzania, and I do medical charity in Tanzania since 1998. I take colleagues and I see patients of different backgrounds who are located in a village called Kera, Tanzania. I'm here because I'm passionate about this topic. I am an immigrant from Tanzania. I came here when I was 19 to pursue education, ended up becoming a physician. I also feel very fortunate that I'm one of those that didn't grow up in a family or a society that forced this horrible practice. You look at the age of FGM, starting at age four to 10, that's when it's mostly common, the most vulnerable ages, where the parents, although they don't think this is a crime, they think it's actually a privilege.
You know what? Your testimony is very important, and there are people in the audience who are having difficulty hearing you. So, if you could just speak up a little bit and maybe pull the microphone.
These do work, so if you pull them up here.
Do you hear me now? Do you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. And by the way, before I continue, I'd like to ask what you want me to focus on. The public health issues or my whole experience about this and what I think is necessary.
Well, I think you're in a position to testify to some facts and some direct observations and helping us understand the relevance and importance of this bill. And so, things that come from your direct experience are probably the things that are most helpful to us.
Very good. There's a lot of public information about female genital mutilation. There has been documentaries, there has been clips on YouTube, and also a lot of journals, et cetera. But I've had the ability of meeting some of these patients and also learning about the consequences of female genital mutilation. It's a public health issue, and it's a major one, especially with now the influx of immigrants from the African area. The healthcare personnel is going to see a lot of this and the complications of. Also, there are some immediate consequences and the problems that these victims undergo. When you look at a four-year-old, and the processes used in the Third World countries or mostly Africa, where there's no sanitation, the instruments used are razor blades, and sometimes it's a traditional event with all the ceremonies, and that one razor blade is used for all these children, the transmission of everything you can imagine. In a young little girl at age four to 10, who really is forced or doesn't even know any better, when you look actually at the videos of how they do this, it's just unfathomable. So, you look at the acute consequences of the procedure, although for the family members and the women that do it, it's a prestigious occasion, it's something about social status, but the children or the girls that go through it is what bothers me the most. You start off by having no anesthesia, and the kid's screaming, and if they move the wrong way with the operator who is performing the procedure, who doesn't know the actual anatomy properly, and then you sever some of the nerves, you sever the ureter, or you create tremendous bleeding, it causes death and sepsis. And then, when you look at the chronic complications, first of all, the psychological impact, the pain that's to be endured. And then you look at the chronic consequences, which are infections, scarring, keloid formation. These women, some of them are so deformed, they have this overgrowth of tissue that looks like a grapefruit. And while the intent of the procedure as to the women that perform it is to create better society status in that group of having a man marry them, but the consequences of that, then, is the other way around, where she has this huge keloid down there and she can't even be attractive to anybody. There's also the newromas that occur that are very painful, and therefore, they have what we call dysperonia, very painful intercourse. And then, the infections, the blunt blades, they are rusty, they create tetanus, clostridium. And then also, some of the types of genital mutilation are so severe that all's left for that lady is a tiny hole, and he cannot eliminate the urine and the menstrual material clearly. So, it becomes stagnant, and it creates necrosis and infection. And I've seen women with genital vesical fistulas, vaginal rectal fistulas from this. They're shunned, they're astrocised, and it's very unfair to a patient or a lady who didn't ask for this. Now, there are some patients who ask for it, but I think it's because they don't know any better. It's clearly a very, very unethical procedure. And now, with the influx of all these immigrants from different African countries who have had this procedure performed, some of them are of childbearing age, and we're seeing a lot of them here in the United States, it's on the rise. And when they come in, they are so infibulated, I mean, they have just a tiny hole, and when they're pregnant, if you don't see a practitioner on time, you can create lots of ruptures during delivery, and that's when the vesical vaginal fistulas occur too. So, actually, the physicians also have to be well aware of how to manage these patients, which, again, is a health cost. Massachusetts is good with healthcare, but it's going to really increase the health cost of these patients. When they come in, some of them, the procedure is so perfect that the hole is so tiny, the child's head can't get through, and that increases maternal fetal deaths. There's also issues about what do you do when you recognize this situation before the child, before labor. You do a procedure called deinfibulation, so that you can create a bigger hole for the child to come through, but I'm, some of the documents indicate that the mothers are so used to that situation that was done to them a long time ago, they demand that you do it. You sew back the vaginal entrance to where it was before they had the child. And I read that some of the physicians have been almost forced to go back and infibulate the infibulated area postpartum. And I think if there's a law making that a criminal offense, then the physicians will be protected in declining to do this procedure for those who are requesting it. Because at the end of the day, they'll have one child, and then the next child, and the next child, and then you're performing a procedure that maybe you're against, but because the patient is requesting for it in a situation which is postpartum, some of them won't think it's a crime, but it shouldn't be done at all. The other concern I have is that, so, these women have vesical vaginal fistulas, rectal vaginal fistulas, they're shunned from society, and who knows, we might have some of those come here as immigrants. So, you have to take care of them. And why take care of patients when you can avoid these consequences? I think that if we have reinforcement, tougher reinforcement, then some of these situations won't occur, and even if we have immigrants, at least we've started off on the right foot that they know they cannot undergo these procedures or even agree to have them done. It's very evident that most of these women are forcefully coerced into these procedures, and some of them are brainwashed, and the little children, they don't know any better. So, with all these and the healthcare issues and the infection issues and the immigration issues, it's becoming also evident that these patients and family members are taking them back home on a vacation. It's called vacation cutting. So, we have these residents who are United States citizens who are probably not 18, so they can't speak their mind, or they're worried about what their family members would think, and they go back home and they have this procedure done. And then, they bring them back, we were on a vacation. So, again, this is Massachusetts' problem, that there's nothing in place to prevent this kind of activity occurring. And these kids, likewise, at a young age, they become incontinent of urine, they cannot undergo good menstrual circulations, they retain urine, some of them, they have pain, and they will frequent the emergency room or the healthcare. It is just barbaric when you look at some of these videos and what's done to these women, and it's also barbaric to know that some of them don't have consenting age, or they can't consent at all because of the society, because of the pressures from their family members. And if we have some reinforcement of some kind, I heard that it's there on a federal level, but I think Massachusetts, we also need to do something so that we can have healthy women, we can prevent maternal fetal death, we can prevent the post-traumatic the post-traumatic stress syndrome from these events, and the cutting, and what they have to go through, and then the childbearing consequences of these practices. So I am very grateful that I'm here today, because I'm a female, and I was born in Africa, and I didn't get exposed to that, but how wonderful is it that I'm part of this discussion, to see how we can enforce this. It almost appears that it's a female issue. No offense to the men in the audience, but it is a female issue. I know there is male circumcision, but it's done differently. This is very barbaric, and it targets an area that has a lot of neurovascular engorgement, and if they catch you wrong, you bleed to death. I really think that it's a problem that we can enforce. There are many countries in Africa that have already enforced these criminal offenses in many countries, but the age limit is only 18. So what's happening now is the parents are waiting for the kid to be 18, and then they're performing the procedure. So I don't know which one would be the best way to do it, but I heard that maybe the age statute could be increased, I don't know how, we can work on that. But there's a lot to do, and some of the family members here, who really agreed to FGM, they want to do it irregardless. They will find every alternative to go back and get their children mutilated, because then they can get better husbands, which is not the case. There's absolutely no argument for these procedures anymore, and something strict and stern has to be done.
Thank you very much. That was a very moving set of testimony, and I appreciate you bringing it to us. Are there questions from members of the committee? Quick question. You're familiar with families here that have taken their children abroad, is that something that you've actually dealt with?
I have not dealt, I'm not a pediatrician, I'm hospital medicine. I've heard and I've read about it.
Heard about it in local, or read about it sort of in general terms?
I've heard about it from some of the physicians who are pediatricians.
Who have been treating children around here?
Yeah.
That have come back?
And it's a hearsay that they took their kids back. I have no proof, but I've read, the New York Times did an article about this, and there's a lot of literature now about the fact that family members are taking the kids home for cutting vacation.
But is this something that you've heard from other physicians in Massachusetts, that they've observed children that they believe to have been taken?
They have heard from family members.
Okay.
They have not, I'm not sure they've observed, but they've heard from family members that this indeed is a practice.
Okay. Other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for the work you're doing by going back
Thank you.
To your community, I'm assuming your community, our adopted community, to do the work that you do. It's so important that doctors are reaching out that way, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much.
Good afternoon.
He's seated, I'm going to allow him to testify. Go ahead, you may proceed.
Thank you. My name's David Moran. I'm here to support House Bill 1619, specifically an act relative to regulations requiring secure videotaping of the booking process of state police arrestees, which was filed by Representative Swan. I want to thank Representative Swan, who's not here today, very much for his support in filing the bill. Real quickly, I'd like to preface my comments by referring to some of the previous testimony. I mean, it just is really shocking, you know, what's going on around the world, and, you know, how, I feel that, you know, I've suffered a personal injustice in my own experience, but what a small injustice that actually was compared to what's going on around the world. So thank you for coming to Springfield. Two years ago, I traveled up to the State House to testify before the committee, and I see a lot of new faces here. So some of you may not be familiar with my story, but I do thank you for coming here. It's been a lot easier for me to get here than, of course, you know, going on the T and waiting, and, you know, for all the huge amount of bills that were before the committee two years ago, when this particular bill, which was 1640, was on the docket. And also, I'd like to say I'm very happy that this is being video recorded in light of what the context of the bill is. So what happened to me was, in 2009, I was arrested for drinking and driving by a state trooper, and during the booking process, I was attacked at the state police barracks at 600 Liberty Street in Springfield. And there was a video camera in the booking room, it had a red light on, you know, I had every reason to believe that that video camera was in fact recording. And like I said, I was attacked, and in the subsequent Internal Affairs Bureau investigation, I was informed that there was no videotape, and that was very disappointing. And it was a huge obstacle in terms of me finding justice and remedies to what had occurred, because there were no witnesses except for state police troopers, and the only avenue of recourse seemed to be the Internal Affairs investigation. You know, I went to the Attorney General's office, I went to the governor's office, I went to the Springfield Police Station to try to file a police report, and they actually would not let me file a police report, because it was, you know, specifically a matter for the state police Internal Affairs to deal with. So that was very difficult, and I wrote a lot of angry letters, and went about it through that means, and I ultimately settled upon legislation as the appropriate venue for dealing with this. And I went to my state senator, who was Senator Bonacanti, and he advised me to write a bill. And I did, and he put it through the Senate Counsel's office, and he also returned that to me, and I met with Representative Swan, who was very helpful, and said that he would file a bill if, you know, if I brought one to him of this regard. So, it went through the Senate Counsel's office, and it came back, and this is pretty much the bill that we have here today, it's gone through a couple changes, but that's the bill. And it really seems, from my research and from my own personal experience, that there aren't any state law requirements pertaining to state police booking processes. I haven't been able to find anything on the Mass Legislature website, for example. There doesn't seem to be anything really in terms of concrete law, there might be something of administrative policy or procedure that might not be immediately available to the public or easily findable, but I can't find anything. And it really seems to me that in this day and age, we should have the video recording of at least the booking processes. I know that there's the, as I mentioned in my testimony two years ago, that there's the Commonwealth versus Dejan Batista case, in which the Supreme Judicial Court strongly recommended that interrogations, I believe, I'm not sure about booking processes, there's a little bit of gray area there, but that interrogations be video recorded, you know, I think that was, again, specifically referring to felony cases. And ultimately, the Supreme Judicial Court left it up to the state legislature, to the General Court, to decide at a later date, or to investigate. And so, I really think that it's time, with the proliferation of video technology, you know, I just, the other day, or actually, it was maybe about a month ago, I watched on C-SPAN a U.S. Senate hearing on police body cameras. So I mean, it's gone, in just the six years since this is, since my experience, I mean, this has gone to whole new levels of interest in video recording of police conduct and misconduct. And I just want to really quickly say that, you know, I have the greatest admiration and respect for state police and for all law enforcement officers, and for the work that they do and the sacrifices, because, you know, the actions of one person, you know, who could be going through, who knows what, all the fear and the anxiety that must accompany being in that sort of position. That shouldn't reflect, or in no way reflects, on the entire agency, but I do think that when it comes to the protection of the rights of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and anyone who should find themselves in a Massachusetts state police booking room, I really do think that the state legislature and the Commonwealth should take steps which are not only, you know, within our grasp in terms of the costs of video technology, but it just seems that it's well past time that we move ahead with this. And, you know, so that's pretty much my story. I've worked really hard on it, I've come, you know, I went to Boston, but I really tried to get away from it in my personal life. This is really something that I would like to leave up to you, but, you know, so long as the legislature doesn't take action on it, I'm going to keep coming back and harassing you, and making every effort that I can to make sure that something gets done in this regard. So, I mean, if you don't like the particulars of the actual bill, I would strongly suggest that you revise it. You know, there may be just, like, you know, minute things, or perhaps very significant things, which, for whatever reason, aren't where the legislature would like to go with this, but I think, you know, that the core of it, it's just something that's very common sense and respectable. So I think that, you know, I would, last time I testified, I asked that the committee does more research on it, and actually find out what's on the books and what the law is, because it's just beyond me, to be honest with you, like where, how this sort of thing happens, and, you know, goes without any scrutiny. But, you know, revise the bill, pass it out of the committee, and bring it to a vote in both houses. And, you know, I just would like to, you know, you have all my contact information on the testimony form, and I would just like to, you know, make myself available to you, whether, you know, it's here, of course, I'd be happy to answer all of your questions, but I would like to, you know, meet with you personally and discuss my story, and also what's happening in other states and municipalities. Springfield, for instance, requires the video recording of their booking processes. I know it's happening in a lot of different cities in Massachusetts, but also different states, like New Jersey, has a very comprehensive plan that they put out several years back. So with that, I think, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, this is something, you know, again, referring to the previous testimony, there's been, you know, some question about jurisdictional issues. This is something that is happening, you know, this is right here in Springfield, I'm so glad you came, in Massachusetts, this is within the power of the legislature, this is the legislative power. You know, I have my copy of the Massachusetts Constitution right here, and Massachusetts has been a leader throughout history, and this is the first and oldest constitution that is still being used in the world. So I think that we should be a leader on this, and I think that it's your responsibility as the Judiciary Committee, the committee on the judiciary, and, you know, as members of the state legislature, you know, to protect the citizens of the Commonwealth. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I see that we've got the Constitution of the Commonwealth built on the whaling industry.
I also have my
It's historically appropriate.
My favorite novel, just in case, I waited like 10 hours last time.
Listen, no problem, we understand, I think that was, you are wise to bring that with you. So today, we've been able to do a little better.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Very clearly heard, and we did hear a little bit about this bill in Boston last week, and it sits very much on the radar screen. Are there questions from members of the committee?
Representative Harrington.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I did have a couple of questions. When you said that when you were in the interrogation room and the light went on, were you audio recorded but not video recorded? Was there?
Well, it was a video camera that was mounted on the wall with a steady red light on. I don't believe that any, there was a microphone or anything like this, I think that is, should be absolutely part of what I support, but to my, I'm not sure about any audio recording that may have been taking place, but I had every belief that that was being video recorded, at least.
So, in follow-up to that, did they use your statements that you made during that interrogation process in a trial against you, were the statements used for something?
Not that I'm aware of, there was, my case for the DUI was continued without a finding. I admitted to sufficient facts at the recommendation of my publicly appointed attorney, which I very much regret now, I believe I got really bad advice, and I think that largely my socioeconomic status had a role to play in me not getting into a position where I could even, I mean, perhaps there's steps I could have taken to actually obtain a videotape, I don't really understand, I just had what the state police were telling me, it's like, there's no videotape, and so I just, you know, came to the conclusion that this isn't going anywhere, and I'm not going to invest tens of thousands of dollars, which was one figure that I was given by an attorney, to move forward with it. So I really, I'm not sure of any actual evidence of there being recordings or, you know, use of my statements. It was very much, in that instance, it was very much of them collecting, you know, my date of birth and stuff like that, it wasn't so much of an interrogation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you very much for listening.
So I'm going to proceed with the rest of the witnesses before us. I note that none of them, if I'm reading this correctly, are here on the FGM or the international statute of limitations. Am I reading that we've heard all the witnesses on the female genital mutilation and the statute of limitations bill? I'm reading that we have. So we're really continuing to the second half of the hearing, and we'll just keep going. Horatio Rodriguez, testifying on House 1346. And you have with you Anna Sandoval?
Yes, I'll actually be interpreting for Ms. Anna Sandoval.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, my name is Anna Sandoque, G-U-E-R, Sandoque. Hi, I just live in housing, or spring housing department, over 65 years old. I'm just coming to just fight for the bill, because I'm living there for eight years. And we are, I'm always afraid, a lot of time with people, they are, go like They are, go like, go to jail and coming out of there and live there. Because what I know is housing department don't let it, but they do, by the law, state, Massachusetts. After people coming for the jail, the family have there. It's a lot they do. They go over there, and we live over there, people for 80 years, 90, 75, 60, 66. And we afraid, I feel, I have a feel. When you get paid, I'm, I'm the one, when I get my social security, just coming and walk out of back and forth especially, and when they getting nighttime is getting, I talk about faces or clothes, I go back and coming for the bank. A lot of time, I feel like somebody follow me and look at the way they are and be, you can be go to check it at the mail box because you feel it. And the reason I'm here, I would like the law just fighting and approve the bill and the age where people we have there, and we can live in peace and quiet and don't be afraid even to go out there to check it at the mail box or to go sometime, I'm going to show, I'm, Thursday, I'm going to show Tuesday, Thursday and Friday sometime, I'm coming for the show five, nine or 10 o'clock, 10:30. And they have, or somebody had to make sure, I go inside, I open the door, I come about the window, I say, I say. And I'm going to be better shopping, just the reason you feel it. Yeah, I see the people just go, and one time I see this lady near, she living there, she's my neighbor, she went to call the car when she just put the, the key for the car, they coming about three guy and push her, take her the, sell her out the pocketbook, and she get robbed. And I'm free for my life and feel for my older people. Yeah, coming talking about, we live there 352. They age 75, 80, 90, a lot of the deaths, a lot of the crime and work and we share, and we can just be safe. I just coming to ask pastor Bill and begging of, we just go and be safe because after you pass 65, you leave it, want to be safe. You want to be, be quiet and just enjoy what you working for.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Did you wish to add to that, or?
No.
If the committee would like to have some sort of, I guess, clarity in what Ms. Anna said, you're more than welcome to go ahead and ask questions or-
Thank you. Are there, are there questions from members of the committee?
I, I just want to commend Anna because she tells me she, she doesn't speak English very well, but she did a fairly good job. I mean-
She did a very good job. Thank you.
I just want to commend you, and also on behalf of the tenant association that she represents, which is here in Springfield on Plainfield Street, which they all could have not been here today because they have their Big Bingo fundraiser today, so it's going on at this moment. But Anna was sent as an activist, she's part of the community police of the neighborhood-
And president with the council-
And vice president of the neighborhood council, so I just want to salute you and all the members who have brought this issue to my attention on the safety of folks in the public housing units, also on the senior citizens' housing units. So, just commend you, and thank you very much for your testimony.
You are welcome.
Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you very much for your testimony. So, at this time, being 3 o'clock, we're going to sort of formally transition into the next segment, and we're going to take, I've got Senator Welch has been for a while, here for a while, and then I see, and I see Representative Popolo, I see Representative Baldiga, so we'll have those as the next three witnesses, and if you have a panel to bring up with you, that's fine, or if you want to come up by yourself, that's fine. So, Senator Welch?
Good morning. Good morning. Good afternoon.
I, I always say, it doesn't matter what time of day or night it is, just good morning.
I didn't recognize the time zone change. I thought we were still on the same-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you so much for, for coming out. I'm, I'm here, I, I think I'm testifying on a few different bills, but I think the first one is a piece of legislation that Representative Mike Finn and myself have filed, working in conjunction with the Ladizinski family, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you met with the Ladizinskis a few months ago, a couple of months ago, I guess it was, and it's legislation that's been filed concerning the, the penalties around motor vehicle homicide and vehicular homicide when it comes to driving under the influence. And obviously, it's a piece of legislation, I think we can all agree, is something, an issue that, that needs to be addressed in our society and, and something that I think until, unfortunately, you as a family member, a friend, or a loved one, or somebody that's been, been taken by such a tragic event, you don't realize the difficulties that go along with it and to the, how the law and the penalty process plays out. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Ann Marie Ladizinski and her husband Don, both constituents from West Springfield, and I think more than anything, they could probably testify on behalf of their own personal experience and, and why we think this legislation is something that is needed.
Thank you very much for letting me come here. This is the second time I've come before this board. This is much less intimidating than Boston. That was quite an experience. I want to thank you, the members of the Joint Committee on the Judiciary, for allowing me to speak, and to Senator Welch and Representative Mike Finn for sponsoring these bills. I am Ann Marie Ladizinski, and I'm here to speak to bills 1293 and 1294, the purpose which is to increase the minimum penalty for vehicular homicide or vehicular manslaughter driving while intoxicated, and to support the other 21 bills that have been filed relating to impaired driving. Let me tell you why I am here. On Friday, March 25th, 2011, my world was turned upside down. My 29-year-old son, David Ladizinski, was struck by a drunken driver as he was standing on a friend's driveway in West Springfield. It is my belief that having more stringent minimum penalties, drivers will be more responsible and not drive and drink, thereby sparing other families from the devastating loss that we experienced. I will try to give you a sense of how amazing and wonderful David was. He had many, many friends. He had his West Springfield High School friends, his Northeastern College friends, his fishing and camping buddies, and the ones who snowboarded, snowboarded or rode motorcycles with him. Once you met David, you were infected by his smile and caring. You were now his friend. During dinner at a local restaurant that fateful evening, David, his dad Donald, and I discussed many things. His life was evolving. He was an engineer and told us that what he was accomplishing at his two jobs. He talked of our weekend plans. On Saturday morning, he was to be fitted for a tuxedo for his sister Sarah's upcoming wedding. Then he and I were going to visit a jeweler to commission an engagement ring that was, that he had designed for the love of his life, Eleanor. He had selected the Fourth of July at Manchester by the Sea, Eleanor's hometown, as the place for the proposal. He was in the process of selling his condo in Somerville in order to purchase a two-family home to begin the next phase of his life. But all of this was not to be. As David was leaving his friend's house, he was struck while still standing on their driveway. A drunken driver first struck two mailboxes and then our precious son. David suffered massive brain injuries. My son David Albert Ladizinski was pronounced brain dead the next day. This singular act took my son's life, destroyed his fiance's future, and changed the, changed the lives of more than 1,000 family members and friends who attended his wake. The six organ donors who received a life-giving gift from David were also changed. They were affected by his murder. I say murder because that is what it was. It was not a mistake. Someone made a conscious decision to drink heavily and then operate a motor vehicle. His breathalyzer test measured .18, more than double the legal limit. This one person, by his lack of personal responsibility, took my tremendously thoughtful son's life and impacted hundreds, maybe thousands more. Since that tragic day, I have been painfully researching the penalties that my son's murderer could possibly receive. Are you aware that the minimum sentence for killing a human being using a vehicle while intoxicated in Massachusetts is only 30 days? Yes, 30 days for killing someone. This is outrageous and cannot be tolerated. According to Mothers Against Drunk Drivers Laws Providing Penalties for Drunk Drivers Who Kill Allow for Vast Judicial Discretion. According to a recent Boston, Boston Globe article, judges seldom sentence drunk drivers. Yet many of these same people go on to kill innocent people like my son David. An average drunk driver will drive drunk 87 times before being pulled over. Victims are given a life sentence while these offenders receive little time in prison. Let me put this in perspective for you. According to newspaper, paper articles that I have read since March 2011, these are some of the wrongdoings and the penalties the perpetrators received in Massachusetts. A Chicopee man was sentenced to six years in state prison for car break-ins, two counts of breaking and entering, and larceny over $250. A man pleaded guilty to sexually exploiting an Amherst teenager he met online. He received a minimum prison sentence of 24 years. A Springfield woman was charged with trafficking in cocaine, and conviction of that charge carries a mandatory prison sentence of five years. Two Springfield men were charged with home invasion. One received eight to 10 years while the other received eight to nine years. A Springfield man was found guilty of mayhem and sentenced to three or four years in state prison for biting off the ear of a coach at a youth basketball game. I do not mean to imply that the sentences were not fair and just, or the victims did not suffer from the injustices perpetrated on them. Could I have some water, please? They are still alive. David Ladizinski and the others killed by drunk drivers are dead. A Springfield man was sentenced to a mandatory life sentence for gunning down a young girl as she sat on her porch. She was not his intended victim. How is her death any different from the victims of drunk driving? They are also innocent victims of murder. While reading my impact statement to Judge Tina Page, I asked her why vehicular homicide, driving under the influence, is looked at differently than any other homicide. She stated that I would need to bring that question to you, the legislature of Massachusetts. So, I ask you, when a person is killed by gun, a gun or a knife, it is not called gun homicide or knife homicide, knife homicide. A vehicle does not have the ability to drive itself any more than a gun or a knife can maneuver itself. But society most, almost views vehicular homicide as the vehicle being the object that did the killing. But in fact, the person driving that vehicle caused the death the same as the person with a gun or a knife caused the death. All are homicides. I'm asking you to consider the deaths of David and the 373 Massachusetts, Massachusetts victims of drunk drivers in the past three years for what it is, murder. It crosses all demographics, race, gender, age, social standings. Those who drink excessively and then drive understand the ramifications of their actions. They are personally responsible for murder. They just hope they won't get caught. This is not an accident. This is a choice made by the driver to drive drunk. I plead with you to change the minimum sentence a judge can sentence a person convicted of vehicular manslaughter or homicide, driving while intoxicated, to five years in prison. If this was your child, what would be enough punishment for you? What would seem fair and just? Would a 30-day sentence be satisfactory to you? Thank you for your time.
Did you wish to also speak, Mr. Ladizinski?
Just to reiterate that this, this event of my son being killed was absolutely devastating. It's something that unless it happens to you, can't comprehend it. It's been, and it's been almost five years, and it seems like yesterday, and it's a nightmare that we just can't wake up from.
I, I cannot imagine. I mean, I, and what, what happened in the case? What was your, the driver's sentence to-
The outcome was, he was sentenced to five to seven years, but we went through two trials, and from the beginning, we were told it was going to be two, two and a half years if we were lucky. To me, two, two and a half years when my son is dead and was murdered is not a reasonable sentence. The five to seven years is not even a reasonable sentence. But it all is based on the fact that the matrix that the DAs look at, has the person had prior convictions, blah, 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 blah. But if you start at 30 days, you don't go very high on that matrix. But if you start at five years, you might go a little bit higher. And again, it's not, it's not just the vehicle that did the killing. This was a, a person who was driving that vehicle, just the same way if somebody's killed by a knife or a gun, but it's not viewed the same way.
And the five to seven was definitely an unusually higher penalty than, than most.
Well, thank you for having the courage to, to bring this testimony to us. Are there, are there questions or other members of the committee?
I know, I didn't, Mike Finn has, has joined us, I didn't know.
Thank you, thank you, Representative Finn. Do you, do you want to add to the, to the testimony on this?
First, I'd just like to apologize to my constituents for getting here late, the traffic coming over. I can't apologize enough.
We, we were unusually timely, so-
I actually was banking on the fact that we would-
Yeah, yeah, no, I saw, sorry, sorry to change the rules on you there, Representative.
No, but really honestly, this was one of the first bills that I filed when I first coming to the legislature. The story that was presented to me then is the exact same now. The facts speak for themselves as to why, you know, we're hoping to see the penalty phases for the vehicular homicide increased, not just, you know, to offer this family a bit of solace in what happened to them, but for other families. Anything that can be done as by way of a deterrent for other future actions for future individuals, we feel is extremely important, and this is just a precipitating event for what we hope others will see in the same light.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, and my personal, my personal condolences for your loss, and I know I speak for all the members of the committee in that. We here on this committee, some very horrific stories, and our, our charge is always to try and find that balance with what's going on. We were distracted somewhat, and I apologize, although listening carefully to your words because I think we were all somewhat surprised at the 30-day piece, and I assure you, we're going to go back and take a look at that, because I think we all believed it was a higher penalty than that presently. But you're right, in terms of the personal responsibility, absolutely, that people have to take, and so much has been done over so long a period of time to try and change people's attitudes about drinking and driving, and it's, it's still an epidemic in Massachusetts. It still is, it still is an epidemic in Massachusetts. So, thank you for the courage of coming forward to talk about it.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Just, just as, as an aside, we've been attending these mad sessions that these people who are convicted or, or charged with drunken drive, but haven't killed anybody yet, and we, we have made that our goal, to go to these things and present our side of the story and tell these people the dramatic effects that this had, not only on, on us as, as the victims, but of the perpetrator and his family, you know, that he had, the gentleman that killed our son had a couple of kids, and, you know, he's in jail, what are they doing? And so, it, it's, it affects everybody in, in an adverse way. So, yeah, we were looking this at more of a deterrent than as a, in addition to a punishment, but people will think a little longer if they know, okay, I'm going to go to jail for five years if I get in trouble here.
I think that's valid.
No, it's a constant discussion, particularly with younger folks who, I like to say, consider themselves invincible and invisible. Nobody sets out to say, oh, you know, my drinking is going to result in somebody's death when I get in the car and drive.
Right, exactly.
I don't think, I, people just don't think that way.
This was not a kid, though.
This was not a kid, though.
No, no, I'm just saying, adult and child, but, you know, particularly trying to edge, I have a twenty-four-year-old and a twenty-six-year-old, daughter and son, and have been through this with them and their friends over the years and discussions, and nobody, and adults, you know, we just don't think when we get in the car, that's going to be the outcome. We can all do it. We can all make it home. We can all do what we have to do. I do think your point about the person who commits the crime, the consequences to their family as well is very well taken.
It spreads.
It's devastating to everyone. One of the first as a young man, persons I know to have been convicted of a vehicular homicide was a person who was in my neighborhood, who was a little older than me. And to this day, you know, it's a burden that I know wears about the young girl that was on a bike and was killed in a car accident, alcohol not involved, even just an English homicide. So those things are really devastating to everybody involved, and thank you to your legislative senator and representative for bringing the matter forward.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, question down here, I'm sorry, Representative Harrington.
Thank you. Again, I am so sorry for your loss. It's a horrific experience. I just wanted to ask you a question because I've had a similar situation in my own district. And when you said you had two trials, did the prosecution take into the fact that there was alcohol in the first trial and the second, or was that the difference between the two trials?
The difference was, listening to this young man prior to me about the videotaping, there was a videotape in the West Springfield Police Department, and they were supposed to redact from that video that the man also had cocaine in his possession because he pleaded guilty to that prior. And when they showed the video during the court, it was still in there, and so we had to have a mistrial.
Even though the cocaine would have also impaired him?
He had pleaded guilty to that, so we couldn't mention it. Laws are tricky little things.
Thank you.
And they don't seem to go for the people who are hurt.
If I could just add one thing, just, I just want to pick up on something that Chairman Fernandez said, and it's important to me, and I think you're the best example of it. I had a long career in law enforcement before I came to the State House, and I can tell you the mindset when I first came on in nineteen eighty-one was drunk driving was really not a crime. And if there was no accident, no harm, no foul, take the person home. If you look over the last thirty-four years, it's because of folks like you that have had such a compelling story of loss that have got the laws changed. So if there's any solace at all that you can take from this is that keeping it alive may change the laws even for the better.
I'm not going away. You'll see me again.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Welch, did you have other things you wanted to speak to?
I did have a couple other bills.
That's okay. That's okay.
I could certainly be quick, and I obviously thought that this bill was most pressing and most serious as the others pertain to different subject matter that are before the committee. But thank you all for your attention, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come and testify on behalf of Senate Bill nine fifty-one as well, which is an act entitled, an act to establish the Murder Victim Family Assistance Fund. And this piece of legislation is something that I've filed now for a few different sessions, leading back, I think, to when I was a member of the House of Representatives. And basically, the premise of this legislation would be, you know, it's filed on behalf of victims and their families of murder and homicide. And basically, the premise of it would be to establish a fund on the books of the Commonwealth that would be there for when a movie, a book, a television show, something is created about a specific in real-life homicide that is then recreated in entertainment form for profit. And basically, that fund would be set up on the books of the Commonwealth, and if the producers of the television show, or the movie, or the book, you know, so wish, it would be a voluntary fund, they can make a contribution to the victim witness, I'm sorry, the victim, the Murder Victim Family Assistance Fund. And each DA would then have their victim witness, or the Massachusetts Office of Victim Witness, would be responsible for administering the fund and would disperse the fund going forward for each case that comes up that requires a family, or that a family that is going through a trial, so to speak, could use some of those funds for daycare, childcare, or anything that victims' families do encounter during, excuse me, during their time of the trial or any other hardships. Don't need to tell everybody, obviously, in Boston, one of the real big movies that's out there right now is a movie called Black Mass. And that movie is created by a production company based on the life of James Bulger, and that movie revolves around specific murders that happened in the Commonwealth. It would be just one example of the type of movie, I think, that would be, and the type of company that would be able to make contributions to this fund. And, you know, admittedly, many of the movies and books and television shows that are created are used in a way to help solve murders, in a way to help create awareness around homicide and those type of events. But I think in many cases, you know, the perpetrators of these crimes are often portrayed in a way that, in my opinion, is disrespectful to homicide victims and their families. And I think this is just one way that we in the Commonwealth can try and do something to at least set something up on the books to help future families that are families of victims of homicide. So that's one piece of legislation. Be happy to answer any questions around that. I think probably the details of the legislation might be a little bit more, you know, provide a little bit more detail. But again, it would be a voluntary fund, and, you know, the company that is producing the movie or the TV show would have to contribute to that willingly. The second is to increase penalties for violent acts that happen around youth sporting events. For those of you who have children and go to the soccer fields and football fields and hockey rinks and baseball diamonds every weekend or every night, it's probably not uncommon for you to see unruly behavior in the stands. It can be anything. It can be a parent towards an umpire. It can be two parents. It could be a coach, two coaches. Mrs. Ladizinski referenced one of the issues that we had in Springfield a few years back, where two coaches got into a fight, and one of the coaches bit off the other coach's ear. And this is all done right in front of all the children that are playing the sport and trying to, you know, to try, they could care less about the outcome of the event. They're just there to have fun, but unfortunately, the adults take it to the next level. So this bill would just increase those fines, and, you know, around that, I think we could build a, you know, good public awareness campaign around the fact that youth sporting events are there for the youth. They're not there for the adults and any adult that wants to participate in some sort of violent activity. And it can go everything from a simple assault all the way to stalking and beyond. There's so many horror stories that are out there, and it happens more and more frequently. You know, fairly, rarely a week goes by where we don't hear a story about some adult, you know, acting inappropriately at a youth sporting event. So this is just something that would create that type of awareness, but at the same time, raise the penalty and hopefully make people think twice about if they're at a youth sporting event to take that type of physical action or take any type of negative physical action. So with that, thank you for allowing. Be happy to answer any questions or comments or...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Other questions from members of the committee? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. So we've got Representative Popolo, Representative Baldiga, and then Senator Lesser.
Good afternoon, members of the committee, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it's great to have you out here in Springfield, Mass. Certainly, being an alum of this great institution, it's always great to be back and not have to worry about taking a final or anything like that, although I'm still paying tuition bills. But certainly, I want to thank you for coming out here today and listening to the testimony, certainly having the opportunity for local legislators and their bills be heard. So I want to commend you for that, and certainly your leadership. And also want to say I'm impressed that Representative Gonzalez is missing bingo night in his district to be here. So that's a dedicated legislator. Again, thank you for taking us out of turn, and I'm here with Attorney Trent Campbell to speak in favor of House Bill thirty-six oh seven. It's an act relative to temporary guardianship for a person alleged to be incapacitated. Attorney Campbell's going to give you a few more of the details about it and why we're here, but he had originally contacted my office, and we had discussed this on many occasions, and he gave me a lot of the background for the impetus of it and certainly why we're at this stage. But this bill would simply allow for someone to petition a judicial court in the interest and welfare of a person who does not have guardianship and is alleged to be incapacitated. Essentially, a tribunal would be called, and this is modeled, for those of us attorneys, similar to the medical malpractice tribunal. So a tribunal will be called. They'll hear pertinent information from the petitioner. They'll review all the information and documents, and they'll make a decision based upon that. If, in fact, the tribunal describes, determines that the person is, in fact, a danger to themselves or someone else, they will be able to appoint, under this proposal, a temporary guardianship to last sixty days under our bill. Though, at the hearing, there'll be all the legal due process protections. There'll be attorneys there, and there'll certainly be personal protection as well. But I think, you know, it's important to point out that this has come about, and again, Attorney Campbell will talk about some of the recent cases in our area, in particular Wilbraham and beyond, that highlight the need to expand this particular bill in this area. Just a few more points that I did want to point out. Essentially, again, it will allow a petitioner to get a temporary order of guardianship without a medical certificate. The, will allow the petitioner to get the necessary medical and health examinations that are needed as required of that, and then the petitioner would file the necessary papers in the usual process acquiring a full guardianship. Again, this is just going to be a temporary guardianship during that timeframe when that particular person may be of intense harm to himself or herself or somebody else. And frankly, if the medical examination, if the tribunal itself doesn't deem it necessary after its findings, then, you know, certainly, then the case would be terminated at that particular point. But again, I want to thank you for your opportunity. Attorney Campbell will further expand on that a little bit more. Those are just some of the highlights and certainly the need to move this forward, and I would certainly ask for your favorable consideration on this particular proposal.
My name is Trent Campbell. I've been a lawyer here in Springfield for about forty years, and I appreciate your coming out here because, like some of the other people, going to Boston is not my idea of a good time.
We might agree with that.
I did ask Representative Popolo for assistance on this matter because, in my experience over the years, there've been many, many occasions where people, families particularly, are faced with a dilemma. They have an adult who is not functioning well, and because they are over the age of eighteen, there is no means of forcing them to see a doctor to get a medical certificate. So we end up with a very, very difficult situation, and sometimes these situations have resulted in people being killed, people being harmed very badly. It's either the person who has the mental defect that harms someone else, or they harm themselves. And time after time, I have families coming in saying, I can't do anything because they're adults and they refuse to cooperate. And, you know, pile that on top of the HIPAA restrictions to get medical information, and you have a very, very difficult situation. So what I thought we might do is create a panel similar to the medical malpractice panel that allows people with some education and experience in related fields to hear the petitioner come forward, tell their story. And that story may be supported by neighbors or friends or whoever it might be that has personal knowledge, just to get to the point where we can have authority over this person to get him before a medical practitioner who can then make a decision. If, in fact, the medical expert does not support the bill, then that's the end of that. I mean, you hear horror stories about people who want to take advantage of their family members for money or whatever. However, in my experience, I've never seen it. I talked to people whose parents are suffering from Alzheimer or some other kind of dementia who are not responsive to reality. I talked to parents of children who start suffering from mental defects. I am certainly not a medical person. I have all of my medical knowledge out of law school, but schizophrenia, I understand, starts typically in the mid twenties. And that's when younger people start having delusions and perhaps acting on those. So that we're talking about people who have adult competency presumed in the law to be competent, and yet you need to have something that allows the family some relief. They're always saying, I just couldn't get the help we needed. So it was after one or two of these local tragedies on top of what you hear in the national news that made me think that there ought to be something that someone could do. So I contacted Representative Popolo with a suggestion, and he and his staff took it from there, and I think have presented a pretty good alternative for families. Because the goal here is to allow for a temporary guardianship without the necessity of a doctor's certificate. That doctor's certificate is a huge hurdle. And obviously, guardianship is a terribly drastic measure. You are taking away the freedom of an adult in this society. It's not a good thing to do. It's not a thing to take lightly. However, sometimes it's necessary for that person's safety or the safety of others in the community. So that's why I'm asking the House Judiciary Panel Joint Committee to recommend it. There are one or two things I would want to change. The exact language before you says, if he's a danger to himself, I think, or others should be added to that. And the bill that I had initially suggested, suggested a social worker, not a physician, just because physicians are harder to get. And social workers who deal in this area are numerous, and I think they have good judgment when they know that someone is truly in need of assistance and the family can't get it to them because of this. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you very much. Are there members, questions from the panel?
I do have a question. I'm just kind of curious. I've only been involved in a few guardianships in my life, and maybe they were all with cooperation. But are you talking about a scenario where a guardian ad litem would be, or someone would be appointed at the point of application to the tribunal to represent the interests of this person?
I think that's part of the bill.
Is that part of the bill?
Yeah, they would, yeah, at the outset. They have a right to counsel under the bill, and if they can't afford it or find one, the tribunal can appoint counsel.
And is there a reason why we wouldn't simply model that into the probate court to do it before a judge today, as opposed to off to a tribunal where the court is experienced in taking on adult guardianships as well as guardianships of minors?
There are two primary reasons. That my suggestion was broader than that. First of all, the probate court in Springfield is overwhelmed. It cannot function very well with what it has, so limiting your access through the probate court seemed to me, at least locally here, to be a difficult thing. They run weeks and months behind.
Even on emergency petitions? For temporary?
I tell people that if you're not bleeding, it's not an emergency in Springfield. So, you know, it's very, very difficult to get the attention that you should have. The other reason that I suggested it not just be the probate court is because probates are, courts are... are -- courts are county courts, and some of these families are not close to a family court, so that if it was a district or superior court, they might be able to get some help more locally to their problem. That's the only reason.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I have one question, because you drew a comparison to the medical malpractice tribunals. So the one thing that I see as a glaring difference in this is the medical malpractice tribunal is focused on expert testimony. You know, there is a medical opinion. So the evidence here, it seems like it would primarily be anecdotal.
It would. It would. But if you're testifying that your child has access to guns and is under the belief that neighbors are threatening him and you can't control him, it might be deemed an emergency even if it is anecdotal.
So would you -- would the petitioner only be a family member?
Not necessarily.
I mean, what if you had, I mean, this is an extreme observation, but a neighbor saying another neighbor was crazy and maybe went in without?
Well, we hope that the panel can use common sense and good judgment, but I think yes. It's limited to people who may --
I mean, it seems a little broad to me.
-- who may be concerned because they're a family member, or it may be someone in the neighborhood who feels that this person doesn't have family that can take control and we need to do something. Typically, the petitioner is the person who's asking for the authority, so I don't think people are going to come in lightly.
And are you thinking of this primarily in terms of mental health issues, or would this extend to substance abuse?
I think of it in terms of mental health issues primarily. I do.
And just Madam Vice Chair, just, you know, there's going to be more than just hearsay or just, you know, he said, she said, they said. So under this proposal, there is, you know, a requirement to submit necessary evidence, if you will, if it's medical, some kind of evidence, whether it's a, it could be a police report, it could be something to that nature that says, "Okay, you know, this is an issue now. This has been said, this has been threatened, this has been done." You know, this could be pre-medical, it could be something that's been ongoing, you know, to determine that. So that's why we had come up, and again, you know, the makeup of that tribunal or panel is certainly subject to discussion, but the point is, is that, you know, we want to have an expert on there, have a doctor on there, have somebody on there to be able to say, "Look, this is what we've come to, a rational conclusion, not something that's just haphazardly made by, if you will, one person, you know, be it a judge or not, but it's somebody that has the ability in a group form to be able to make a decision based upon the facts and not just hearsay."
There are times that I've dealt with families with children who have not functioned very well, and they're able to control the situation until they're 18.
Right.
And then bang, they can't do anything.
Right.
And those are the kind of things where we might be able to bring in some history from the medical side, but there are other times where the problems arise, and it's going to be police reports and maybe school reports or incidents that can be testified to by others through their personal knowledge. A lot of it's going to be anecdotal. So we've got the possibility that someone who isn't functioning appropriately may have a problem for maybe as much as 60 days. But if they're not mentally ill and the doctor doesn't support it in the end, there we go. They're done. We're not trying to make it a more expansive definition of mental illness or whatever. We're trying to get the person to help. That's the goal.
How does this fit with the existing Section 12 process?
You always need a medical certificate.
Well, you don't need to get them in there.
Are you talking about a three-day commitment under Section 12?
Yeah.
Yeah. My experience with those things is if it's a three-day commitment, they don't usually extend very much beyond that. I mean, the hospitals are not in the business of looking for this, and they're typically, they say to the family, "You got to go. You know, you got to take them. We have nowhere to put them."
But that would be on the basis of some judgment about that he is not, in fact, a danger to himself or others. If he is a danger, they'll keep him.
The statute says immediate danger to himself or others. In the past, I've used a writ of apprehension. When someone comes in, we go to district court. We have an order issued from the district court judge to the police to pick the person up, bring them in, and we'll have the psychiatrist at the courthouse examine them. And in one particular case, psychiatrist examined him and reported to the court that he was not an immediate danger to himself or others. He simply wouldn't eat, and his mother was worried that he would die. The experience of bringing him in against his will and his reaction to his mother for doing that was such that she wouldn't go forward, even though she now had the evidence from a doctor saying he's not functioning well, he's mentally ill, and he died. He starved himself to death, and it was a terrible thing.
Thank you. Questions from other members? Thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Boldega and then Senator Lesser.
Chairman Bronsberger, Chairman Fernandez, members of the committee, it's good to have you out here in the Pioneer Valley. Good to see you. I'm an alum of the university, and my sister-in-law is an alum of the law school here, so we think very highly of the Western Ringland University in the area, and my district's just across the river, a few miles away, so it's great to be here with you. And I'm testifying on behalf of Bill 1178, which I filed. It's the Act Relative to Unlawful Passing of a School Bus. I know that Representative Gonzalez has co-sponsored it, and several of you have as well, so thank you very much. And we heard earlier from the Lutazinski family about their horrific story about the killing of their son in that accident and the deterrence that we need in place with bills and motor vehicle laws throughout the Commonwealth. And the bill that I filed kind of alludes to the added deterrent we need around the unlawful passing of a school bus. So right now, there's a monetary infraction of a couple hundred dollars in place if you pass a school bus. I believe on the second conviction and the third conviction, you'll lose your license for roughly six months, but a number of your attorneys, I've been in law enforcement, I was a police officer myself, we know the process of law and that even getting one conviction in an instance like this is almost impossible to get, so the fact that you'd even pay a $250 fine is probably unlikely. And a local news station here, 22 News, did a story a while ago and looked into just people passing school buses unlawfully in this area, and they pulled up some numbers, and roughly throughout the Commonwealth over the last four years, there's been 10,000 warnings that have gone out to motorists from the R and B who have unlawfully passed a school bus, because most of the time, you know, their school bus is driving or they're about to stop when that motorist is in that rush in the morning, and they accelerate with intent to get by that bus as fast as possible to get to work. And the school bus driver is tasked with trying to make sure that the kids are safe at the same time, they're getting on the bus, there's no car coming up the other side, they're not running in front of it, they have to get a description of the vehicle, try to grab a license plate while stopping the bus. It's almost impossible to do. So we can probably come to the conclusion that there's a lot more vehicles that are passing school buses than the 10,000 warning letters that go out on, you know, over the last few years. When a warning letter goes out, it's just, that's exactly what it is. You're not paying the fine, you're not asked to pay the fine, you're not asked to pay a reduced fine. It's a warning, "Don't pass a school bus again." If they happen to grab your vehicle information a second time, a request for a hearing happens, and I've been trying to find the numbers on how many of these hearings actually happen, whether or not you can just choose to not show up to a hearing, but there's no real deterrent to, in the morning, when you're behind a vehicle, a school bus that has stopped, you very well know there are children on the bus, the most vulnerable population we have. They can't make the decisions themselves. They don't know that there's somebody angry trying to get to work, that the school bus is stopping in the morning. I'm a father of three. I have a three-year-old, a two-year-old, and a five-week-old. My three-year-old started pre-K this week. I drive in every morning. I still see people flying by outside of the school. I still have to look every day to make sure nobody's, you know, driving fast in front of us where the crosswalk is and a crossing guard is. So I speak to you in the fact of that. I think we need a little bit stronger deterrence when it comes to these laws, because there's real no deterrent to, if you know you can blow by a school bus, if you get a warning letter that goes out in the mail and a second one goes out, there's a hearing, you can choose not to attend, and then you need even a conviction, I mean, two convictions, three convictions, we can probably say it's not going to happen unless it's the same person who's, you know, grossly, maybe even hit someone, maybe in that case it would happen. So this law, it's kind of a step in that direction of deterrent. It's not perfect like any other law. It increases the monetary fines, but also gives the tools to law enforcement. So if this happened in the presence of a police officer or a law enforcement officer, they could do what they might be able to do in the situation of a DUI. They'd be able to confiscate the license, have the vehicle impounded, and the person would immediately lose their license for up to six months. There needs to be a deterrent when it comes to this law. So I mean, I'm sure every one of you, even if you have kids, don't have kids, if you're driving to work, have seen that person, just choose to blow by the school bus as it's coming to a stop, and I can't think of anything that's important enough to drive by a school bus when you know there's children getting on and off of it. So I think we need a little bit stronger deterrence with this law. Happy to discuss it with you, but I think we need to do something where, I mean, 10,000 warning letters over the course of a few years, no fines being, no action being taken with these motorists. I think the 10,000 number, and that's just what, in this investigative report that was done, they talked to school bus drivers, and on an average, they might be able to get one license plate out of 10 that passes by, write down a vehicle description and put that in. The other conundrum is, "Well, I let so-and-so borrow my car." Well, it's going to come down to the onus is on the owner of the vehicle, because that's the only real enforcement we can take here. So if you let somebody borrow your vehicle, if that's your story, well, it's ultimately your vehicle, and some sort of action needs to be taken. So there is a gray area, but not a big enough gray area that we can't take some sort of deterrent and make some action happen. And once again, I defer back to 10,000 warning letters over a handful of years is quite a bit of, obviously, laws, you know, being broken with coming to pass a school bus. So I think we need to look into it, come up with a better deterrent for people not to, you know, rush by that school bus in the morning, and hopefully it doesn't take, you know, a group of kids or a child being hit and killed by a car, which has happened unfortunately in the past, so we can take some action with this. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for coming out here. I know the drive to Boston is long. I do it when, my district's about 30 minutes to the further west, so I know the drive you made out here today, so thank you very much and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you for bringing this matter forward. Are there questions from members of the committee?
I appreciate you coming forward with it, and it's our pleasure to be out here, and it's because of you folks advocating that we come out is why we're here, so we appreciate it. And this issue is one that I am becoming more and more attuned to the impatience of drivers today. It's people blowing through stop signs, blowing through red lights. Yellow doesn't mean anything anymore. Red means very little. Cross, in fact, I was crossing the crosswalk out in front of this building to walk here, and I was in the crosswalk near the middle, and some guy just drove right on by me on the other side of the road as though the crosswalk meant nothing.
Didn't mean it.
Yeah. Actually, if it was you, it was intentional. But I, and the school buses, I see, you know, the line of school, the line behind a school bus coming by my house in the morning, we're on a main road. I was noticing the other day stretched probably for a mile and a half, and there's a great deal of impatience with that, that people just have to learn, again, to be patient. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, and safe travels.
Thank you. Thank you again. Senator Lesser, did you testify? Thank you for -- thank you.
Senator, a long time no see.
Guys, I have an extra room at my house if you guys want to spend the night.
Party time at your house.
Yeah, exactly. So I just wanted to first say thank you. Thank you to Chairman Bronsberger. Thank you to Chairman Fernandez. It's really great to have you here. Welcome to my district, the best district. Welcome to the city of Springfield. You're in Ward Five, if anybody asks. And I wanted to give a special thank you as well to my predecessor, actually, Senator Kandaris, who is, oh, right there. I thought you had stepped out, but I just want to thank her for her guidance, her leadership over so many years, and her mentorship as well, as I've kind of gotten my feet wet here. I also want to just thank you for being in Western Massachusetts. It's important that you're here. We appreciate it. The Western Mass delegation certainly appreciates it, and it means a lot to us, and I know that it's a little harder than the typical hearing routine, so I appreciate it, and on a personal level, I just wanted to say thank you for that. I'm here to just speak about one bill. It's Bill, House Bill 1641, filed by my colleague, Representative John Veles, from Westfield, an act concerning the false representation of military status. I'm a co-sponsor of this legislation, and I was really taken by it because I think it's very specific, it's very well-written, and I think it attacks a concrete problem that this legislation will solve. Basically, the bill makes it illegal to fraudulently represent oneself as a veteran or as another active service member in order to gain financial or other benefits. Those who commit this crime would be guilty of a gross misdemeanor and would be punished with no more than one year imprisonment and/or a $1,000 fine. You know, it's our responsibility as legislators to protect the integrity of those who have served our country and who have sacrificed so much to protect it. This straightforward measure will be a tool for our district attorneys and our judges to bring a person to justice who commits this particularly offensive form of fraud. It's also going to help protect our state and federal funds from abuse by those who receive benefits without earning them. After all our veterans and their families, importantly, it's to protect veterans' families as well, have done for us, we must do everything we can to uphold their honor and protect them from fraud. And again, on a personal note, my father's a member of the Massachusetts National Guard, Lieutenant Colonel in the National Guard, and I understand from a personal level the sacrifice he's made to put that uniform on and the particularly offensive conduct that's involved in pretending that you're a veteran or you're a service member when you're not. And so with this in mind, House Bill 1641, I believe, is a carefully tailored measure. It attacks a concrete problem. I believe it's been well drafted. It's a measure I'm proud to support, and it's a measure I'd ask this committee to give a favorable report on. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, and thanks for bringing this forward. Are there questions from members of the committee?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say thank you to my colleague and friend, Senator Lesser, for coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you, Senator.
Is Sarah Stein here? And behind that, so I have John Bennett, and if there's any, you'll be next after Ms. Stein. And if there's anybody else who's planning to testify, maybe you can let, make sure we know about it. Got to wave at Anne. She'll let you know. She'll come over and get your name down. Thank you very much for coming.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name's Sarah Stein. I'm an assistant professor here at Western New England University of Criminal Justice and Forensic Science, and I'm also a cold case consultant. I co-founded an organization called the Center for the Resolution of Unresolved Crime, and I consult for family members and law enforcement agencies on unresolved cases. I'm here today to speak in support of Senate Bill Number 951, establishing the Murder Victims' Families Assistance Fund, and I wanted to start my testimony too with a story. So I've been the private investigator for Molly Bish's family for 13 years now, and I started working with them when I was 19 years old and still in college myself. And when Molly's father first took me to Commons Pond, where Molly was abducted from, he untied a yellow ribbon around one of the fence posts. This was right after Molly's remains had been found, and there were yellow ribbons up to remember her. And he gave it to me, and he said, "We can't afford to pay you anything, but I really hope you remember Molly." And I still have that ribbon hanging on my door today because I know that these victims cannot afford to pay for a lot of external services. I do not charge families for any of the work I do. And as Senator Welch said, I believe this bill is extremely important. In researching what Massachusetts does provide to victims, we do provide a great deal of services, but the expenses that are currently covered under the Victim Compensation and Assistance Division of the [inaudible] [inaudible]. Assistance Division of the Office of Attorney General include such things as funeral and burial costs, lost wages, loss of financial support, home maker expenses. They don't cover other things for victims, such as alternative services. And this fund would go directly to victims as opposed to support services, so the victim's family could allocate the funds in the way that they see fit. And I think that's very important. My undergraduate degree was in the victimology of pedophilia, so I spent a considerable amount of time looking at both the characteristics of victims of crime, but also the characteristics of their families once these victims are left behind. And the trauma that these families experience is immeasurable, and they often don't have resources to ask for help. So I would ask that you please do support this bill. One additional thing is that when a victim does apply for compensation from our state, they have to wait between four to six months to receive an answer for their case, which, if a family is in immediate need of financial assistance, that's not an acceptable timeframe. Another point to be made is that while this is an unconventional form of funding through media and through television programs and movies about a murder case, a lot of reporters that I've spoken with have felt the need to help these victims' families in some way other than contributing press to their story, and I think this would give them a lot of validation to be able to help these families. And also, some families might not necessarily appreciate the coverage that's given to their case. They might see it as an invasion, so this would be a good way for those media outlets to be able to give back. So I would very much hope that you support this bill, and I really appreciate you giving me the time to testify before you.
We thank you very much for taking that time and for waiting and for the strength of your testimony. Are there questions from members of the committee? That was not a question.
Was that a question?
No, that was, that was actually a comment, no. No, no. Thank you very much for coming.
All right.
And for the work you do, indeed.
Thank you for the work that you do.
John Bennett. I see you're here to testify? We got you. We'll bring you in after, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir.
You're welcome. I'm testifying on Bill, House Bill 1346.
Yes.
Which deals with punishment for people who, for violence against seniors. And I want to tell you that I'm definitely a senior. Is there any question about that? In November, I will be 85.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I think.
You think you'll be 85?
Well, I think I'm worth it. Congratulations.
I think you're worth it.
I'm not, some days I'm not sure of that. I think the point that I want to make, again, I'm not an expert on this bill, but Representative Gonzalez suggested that I should come to this hearing, because I think that violence against seniors is something that cannot be neglected. I think sometimes the idea is that seniors are, well, they're on their way out anyway, so if they get hurt, it's not particularly important. Let me tell you, that seniors have a lot to offer in this state, and we have demonstrated it a lot of ways. If you know the organization that I represent, that I'm not testifying for today, we do a lot of things to help make life better in this state. But seniors definitely are not hurt just physically by the violence. They're also hurt psychologically, and in many ways, that's even worse, I think, because once you get hurt or get abused in almost any way, you become less secure, become worried about what's going to happen to you, and it usually means you become afraid to get out of your room, to get out of your house, to do anything that you would like to do for fear of something else that's going to happen to you. And once that happens, that's the slippery slope downhill for a senior. It doesn't take long after that for you to have physical problems, to have mental problems, and to deteriorate in so many ways that wouldn't happen if you could remain active socially, getting out to meet people, getting out to do things. So that I think that the bill that represents Representative Gonzalez is going to present, has presented to you, and I'm not an expert on this bill, is one that will make sure that if people are hurting, doing any kind of violence, whether it's psychological violence or physical violence, to seniors, particularly in senior housing, but it's much broader than that. It occurs for people living alone in homes, in their own homes, anywhere. It's something that has to be dealt, and the people who do that need to be given a definite knowledge that it's a bad thing for them to do, and that we're going to make sure that you don't do it again. And I think that's basically what this bill does. The particulars we're still going to be studying at Mass Senior Action Council, we haven't really had a chance to look at it since the representative said there was going to be a hearing today, but we will be watching what happens, because violence for seniors is something that can really shorten lives that could be productive for a long time.
Let me assure you that every single member of this committee and the legislature respects the contributions that seniors can make and do want to protect seniors from violence. So your testimony speaks to something that we were all very much in sync with. Are there questions from members of the committee?
I just want to say early happy birthday to you, but also commend you for the work you've done throughout the state of Massachusetts, although, you know, a lot of your work is done here in Western Massachusetts, but you've been more than a mentor to me in some of these programs that are important to the senior citizens and highlighted many of those issues. And again, perpetuating any crime against seniors is something that we're not going to hopefully tolerate, and some of this, part of this legislation will just talk about that. But it's the continuance of the services that your organizations provide, and many of the organizations you provide, because you don't only represent one. Just, I want to thank you, because as a new legislator, I think it's important to have people like you that brings about the importance of some of the issues that sometimes we may overlook because we're new or because we haven't just been part of in the past. But thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank you also, Representative Gonzalez, for your help and support in some of the key legislation that we have been sponsoring. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now, back to Agawam.
Back to Agawam. Representative Gonzalez, did you want to?
I do get to the legislature. I've been there, I think, four times to Boston this month and testified at one important hearing, but it's part of my life.
It's a lot of traveling. It's a lot of driving.
Yeah, well, as long as you're going to let me drive, I'm going to do it.
Amen.
Well, we'll make sure he tells you when that legislation's up, so you can come in and testify about that, too.
Representative Gonzalez, did you want to add anything on this particular bill? Any additional testimony or any comments? I want to make sure you had the opportunity.
I want to thank you, Chairman, but we did speak on it in Boston, so I think that the committee has heard my testimony.
Thank you very much, Representative Gonzalez, and thank you for your advocacy on it. I see two gentlemen. Are you here to testify on the service bill?
Yes, Mr. Brian Lett, District Commander, VFW District Seven.
Please join us. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I want to thank the committee for coming out to Western Massachusetts and paying us this visit. We're honored to have you in our neck of the woods, so it's, the pleasure is ours. My name is Brian Lett. I'm the District Commander for Hampton District Seven. I represent 1,000 VFW members throughout Hampton County, including Ware. I don't know how that happened, but Ware is also included in our district. I'm also the commander of the Military over the Purple Heart here in Western Massachusetts. And I want to tell you that this Bill 1641 is an important bill to all veterans, is important to us. I served in the global war on terror. I served in Afghanistan. My daughter served in Iraq before I was in Afghanistan, and my son served in Afghanistan after me and was also wounded seven months after I was. And I can tell you that the Stolen Valor Act, it's very personal to us. The benefits that we have in Massachusetts are second to none throughout the entire nation. And any effort by, in a play or in a fake, to steal the stolen valor of a combat wounded veteran or a Bronze Star recipient or any other combat veteran is disgraceful, and Representative Veles' bill goes a long way towards dealing with that issue. And I want to thank John for his combat service as well in Afghanistan. And if there's any other veterans here, thank you for your service.
My name is Eric Segundo. I'm the State Junior Vice Commander. I also went to Boston on July 14th specifically to testify for this bill. We are passionate about it. I bring the 24,000-plus members of the Department of Massachusetts VFW in passing this legislation. We're just asking you, as a committee, to pass it, get it out of committee, let the members of both houses vote on it. There are many states that are watching us. There are many states who followed behind us once this bill was passed, and it went national news, and they've already passed it and enacted it and had their governors sign it already. So the remaining states are looking at us to do something. I know it's been with you for a little while. Again, just give it the opportunity for the House and the Senate to vote on it and get it out of committee. So we appreciate. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come in. Questions from members of the committee?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I want to thank these two gentlemen. I obviously, I had the opportunity to speak at the last committee as well, but I just wanted to talk about these two gentlemen just briefly. They are the epitome of why Massachusetts leads from the front with respect to veterans. These guys happen to be from Western Massachusetts, but they travel, as they both just referenced, they travel the state. They are the advocates for veterans statewide. They lead organizations statewide, and it's just an honor to have you guys be here. Obviously, you both served overseas as well. Brian, Purple Heart winner, injured by an IED in Afghanistan, so thank you for your service. And other than that, who were gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we would have had more here. We had some confusion on the communications, because we have the Veterans Affairs hearing tomorrow in Boston, so everybody was saying, "Yep, we're going there." And I'm like, "No, no, it's here in Springfield." So that's why we're lack of participation here, because everybody's anticipating going to Boston tomorrow for the Veterans Affairs.
First of all, no apology ever necessary to us from you. Thank you for your service, and we know the importance of this. Representative Veles' bill is very well-respected among committee members, and your support for it, I know, we know you speak for many other veterans.
Our ranks today are filling now with Iraq and Afghanistan veterans like Mike Soffe and Eric, and a lot of guys are working today, to be honest.
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely.
That's kind of one of the downsides, you know, we don't, we're not retired, a lot of us, we're still working, and I just made it in time from work, and I'm glad you're still here.
I think you guys should head down to the bingo thing going on in Gonzalez's district and merge these issues together here.
We're not ready yet.
Not ready for that. Thank you so much for your service, and thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is anybody else seeking to testify today? Seeing and hearing none. Entertained a motion to adjourn the committee's hearing. So moved. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Hearing is adjourned. Are you here to testify, ma'am? Hold on a second. Are you here to testify?
No.
No, okay. All right. We could reconvene, I think.